You got six, seven. All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the New Canaan Town and New Canaan Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, December nineteenth, regular meeting. My name's Dan Radman, Chairman. We've got the one, two, three, six, seven commissioners with us, so we have a quorum tonight. Before I read off the agenda items here, why don't I just go through roll call? Dan Radman here, Krista Nielsen.
Here.
Kent Turner.
Here.
John Cris.
Here.
Art Casavant.
Here.
Chris Herring.
Here.
John Engel is not here. Paul Knag is not here. Tom Benton.
Here.
And Alan Swerdlow, and I think Alan's gonna be joining us late. Is Christina on?
I don't see her.
Christina. I'm sorry, it's Christina's last name? Larson, that's right. Christina Larson, she's not here either. Got out the machine here. Okay. All right, so we have.
In the waiting room, Christina's.
Want to let her in?
Yeah, just.
Christina, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, we've got you.
Okay.
Thanks for joining. Okay, so we've got eight. So, jumping right in, first item of business, we have an organizational meeting electing the officers for the next term. People are elected to the Planning and Zoning Commission or appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission on two-year terms. Some of the people are rolling off and some people are rolling on and mostly everyone that's here tonight, if you're being, if they're staying, they're being reappointed and staying on for the commission, so. First selectman, would you like to do the honors here? Yep. Are those mics working, or?
No, it gets picked up from.
It will get picked up?
It will.
Just talk loudly that polycom will pick you up. No, not that, no. Okay.
Thank you all for having me here and one of the joys of being first selectman is I get to be at all commission organizational meetings, so. So tonight, we are looking to vote on Chairman and Secretary, so if I could get any nominations for the Office of Chairman for planning and zoning. John Cris.
First selectman, I would like to nominate Daniel Radman for another term as Chairman of Planning and Zoning Commission.
Do I have a second?
I would like to second.
Thank you. Okay, great. Do we have any other nominations for the Office of Chair?
Do we have to vote on that? Do roll call on each vote? Just nominate? Okay. Okay. Your show.
Yeah, so do we have any other nominations for the Office of Chair?
No, but can I make a comment?
Sure.
I would just also like to reiterate my nomination for Dan as Chair. He came on as Chair last year at this time. And pretty shortly after that, we lost our town planner and so, and we were in the middle of three 830G applications, and I think Dan has been a fearless leader over the last year despite some of the pretty harrowing circumstances that we faced, so. I just wanted to give you that shout out. Thank you for your leadership and thank you, Sarah, for stepping up. You've done an incredible job over the last year.
Yes. Okay, I second those.
Well, seeing no further nominations, could I get a little public? All those in favor? I mean, I don't know how you guys like to do. All those in favor of Dan Radman for the Office of Chair for planning and zoning? Is it, I can't, the woman who's Christina here, you're black, so I can't. You blacked out, can you show yourself?
Christina. Here we go. Different person.
Thank you, yes.
Perfect, so it's unanimous for all those present. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the Office of Secretary. Do I have nominations for the Office of Secretary?
I'd like to nominate Krista Nielsen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Third.
Could, do we have any other nominations for the Office of Secretary? See, none. Could I see all those in favor of Kristin Nielsen as Secretary for planning and zoning? There's your hand. I need.
Christina? You want to turn your.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get to a different computer because we're having some technical problems, so, yes, thank you. I wasn't expecting to be on Zoom, I was expecting to be there, so I apologize.
No worries. Okay, it's unanimous for all present, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Looks like we have a great leadership team going forward, so thank you all for doing the great work of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you, guys.
I'd also like to just quickly reiterate, touching on what Krista had noted, I think the commission has gone through a Herculean effort and Sarah as well this, this year with all the 830G stuff going on to the commission as a whole. All of us contributed and worked tirelessly, especially the first four months of this year to get that over the goal line, so. It was a very busy year. Luckily, the tail end of it is fairly calm, so that's a, that's a good thing. Hopefully, 2024 will bring a relatively calm year. We'll see. Yeah, I know.
No, but I actually want to thank all of you for all your work. It's, there's a lot going on in our town that you guys touch and I applaud the work with all of you.
Thank you. All right, we'll jump into the regular meeting. Item two and three both pertain to the same application, which is regarding the digital announce board at the corner of Farm Road by the high school. Tiger Man from DPW was gonna be presenting those, but they pulled those. I think they're still working through some details on that. Item four is continued from a previous meeting. This is 272 Elm Street. This is the current or previously TD Bank, which is now vacant. We had heard this application on our previous meeting and the applicant is back with additional information. Upon application of Frank Vuo So, I think I said that right. Authorized agent for VMI Incorporated Owners for a site plan approval pursuant to section 4.3. C. 10 to allow a new, allow new car dealerships, including a motor vehicle, repair garage and sale of used cars, provided that such repair garage and/or sale of used cars is clearly accessory and incidental to the principal use in the business A zone at 272 Elm Street MAP L, block sixteen, lot eighty-nine. Who do we have from this application here tonight?
Just real quick, Dan, you may want to clarify.
Oh, yes, sorry. So, who was here? Tom, were you here for the previous application?
No, I was not.
You were not, okay. Chris, Chris, were you here for that one?
I was, yes.
You were, okay. Art, were you here?
Yes.
Okay, and I think John Cris, myself, Krista, you were here and Ken Turner.
I was.
Oh, and Christina was here as well, okay. So seated, we'll have myself, Krista, Kent, John Cris, Art Casavant, Chris Herring and Christina Larson for this application. Who do we have from the applicant side for this one?
It's Frank Vuo So.
Hey Frank, how are you?
Good, yourself, I'm doing better.
Good.
Good. Okay, the, the plan has some changes to it. If you look at the proposed floor plan, which is a little bit better than what it was before. We are not going to close the front or change the front door. And what we want to do is we want to enclose the drive-through and create a garage door, an entry to the building. Give me a second here. Basically, creating an entry to the back, back back the building, still allowing for cars to pass from the rear through the back of the building. Cars will enter the building through a seventeen-foot opening where the teller's window, window is. That will be removed. And then there'll be a garage door and the wall splitting the building in half, which will allow the cars for the showroom to enter. Lifts are portable, they're movable, they can point you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nope, go ahead, you're good.
Okay. The, the lifts are portable and movable, the, um, two lifts are gonna be put in there, that's all, is really that we need. Especially with an electric car. There is an area for this parts storage where the vault is now the safe, which will be removed. There also will be a two hundred and fifty gallon tank there for motor oil or any type of oil for storage per requirements, and that's on the inside. Bathrooms are ADA, unisex, everything is ADA, front walkway, front of the building. And that's really it. The, the what it'll look like, the enclosure is right here. So the two sides, the side facing Weeden Derea will look like this, and the five, the, this is the south side facing Grove Street. The other side where the twelve-foot garage door will look like this.
And that's for the end. You'll still be able to bypass that whole thing on the right to go around the building, right?
Yeah, cuz that, that is a three-lane drive-through. So we're just eliminating two drive-throughs.
So all cars will enter the building through this garage door we're looking at here and either go into the service area or the showroom?
Correct.
It's Commissioner Turner. If we're enclosing this area, we're adding to the square footage of the project. Has anybody done a calculation about not necessarily the floor area ratio, but as far as site coverage, are, are we okay?
So we don't regulate building coverage in the business zones?
Okay.
And the existing canopy for the drive-through, will the structure of that need to be modified at all to make this happen? Or it's?
Not at all, no. Obviously, when the teller window comes down, we'll be able to see a little bit better there at that point. But no. Because you're actually having walls built, so the structure on this side i- is gonna be, is gonna be reinforced to begin with. So no.
These visuals, first of all, compliments on, on this additional detail. It's really helpful to see this, and I know it took a lot of work to, to add this extra detail, like the, the mockups are.
I apologize the last time, I, I had very little time to get everything together, and it's, as you know, it's so hard to get people to architects and, and people to draw stuff up quickly, and I'm at their mercy, so.
Yeah, well, we, we gave you some feedback and you, you've done a great job in putting a lot more detail here with the ADA and this additional detailed visual, so thank you. One, one follow-up question for you. I know, I have a Tesla and I know I had to bring it down to Stanford to get it repaired or up to Mount Kiska, so I, I certainly appreciate. You know, I just looked at the math, we have eight hundred electric cars in town. Fourth-largest electric car town in the state, so it's great to have something like this local. But one thing I was curious about was just fire control. So did you have any, like, what's your, is it all sprinkled in there?
No, actually, there's no sprinkler system in there. I mean, God forbid if Tesla should ever catch on fire or anything like that, but.
No, I don't want, I don't want one to either.
No, I actually work for a fire department as well, so. There really isn't any fire suppression if a fire like that should break out. I mean, it would just be fire extinguishers that are mounted on the wall that we're required to have. And even then, e- even then, it, it wouldn't be enough to put out Tesla.
But it's Commissioner Turner. You know, that's a, a good point, and you know, I think our advice to you is that you might want to look at the building code a little closer because your change in use is definitely gonna trigger requirements and possibly sprinkling, having sprinklers throughout the building. So you might just want to look into that before you go too further, too much further down the road.
Absolutely.
Do you have any, any landscaping changes so that the, the parking coverage and any changes on the, I think we talked about signage last that you're gonna apply for a separate signage?
Yeah, signage is gonna be the existing signage on the building, but we, we'll be request, you know, formal, formally applied for the permits for those. The landscape, I'm sorry, go ahead. So the, the landscape, no, the, the landscape needs some, some work. But we will get it back in shape, what's there. And we're not changing anything.
Okay, thank you.
Is Commissioner Turner, can you go back to the elevation you just showed us with the doors in the exterior of the new bay?
Give me a second. Here we go.
Well, I, I noticed that there was a catch basin or drain fairly close to those doors. Yeah, you can see it kind of in the center there.
So that's a, it's a dry well? So that, that maintains the water from the property. Obviously, we're required to maintain most of the water from the runoff from the building. And what concerns would you have?
Well, I just want to make sure that that doesn't, you know, dump into the sewer.
Oh, no, no.
You know, that, what, what are we, you know, contemplating to make sure that if there's an oil spill or petrochemical, what, what happens?
Yeah, well, we would have a spill kit and hopefully there would, again, these are electric cars, so there's not really that much oil as, as before.
The reason why I say conventional because I'm not too sure, you know, what, what to expect in the beginning. And there are gonna be some conventional cars there. But I do not think, you're not gonna have that much oil on site at any one time.
But this is a dry well, so it, it, it would hold whatever contaminant might happen. God forbid, but.
Bleach in, I mean, yes, but it would have to be removed right away before it would bleach into the ground.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Vuo So, I, I have several questions. This is Art Casavant. Your application, at least as we discussed this last month, focused on a electric sales and only, i- if I correctly remember what you said, only occasional automobiles that might be trained in, trade, traded in to be retail. Is that still your business plan?
Correct.
And, and would you withdraw your application if you did not get an arrangement with? Because last month, you said you were working on that application with an electric car dealer. Would you still move forward with this if there was not an electric car dealer?
Well, I mean, I couldn't because obviously it would change whatever I just applied for, so I would have to change use, and I, at this point in time, I'm not ready to do that.
Thank you.
No, I would not move forward.
To follow up on that, so as we discussed last month, you don't have a manufacturer on board currently. You're working on that still.
Correct.
And then the other thing I wanted to follow up on from last month was we talked about parking. I believe you have nineteen spaces shown on your survey. We talked a little bit about which ones are for employees, which ones were for visitors, which ones were for test-driving cars. Have you given that any more thought?
Okay, so many cars would not be, there wouldn't be many cars out front of the building. Employees would be parking in the rear of the building, and there would be five-car parking back there. And for test-driving, I mean, the vehicles would just come out of the showroom and they could drive away and, you know, and, and do a road test.
So you're gonna drive the vehicles from the showroom through the garage to get them out for a test drive? You're not gonna keep them?
No, I mean, we would have them, we would, we would determine that point if someone wants to see the car. We would have that vehicle either brought out or have, have someone see the car and then take it out of the showroom, correct.
So you wouldn't be keeping cars on the lot, on the parking lot in the front that were for sale? That would just be basically for visitors?
Unless they're new, unless some are, some are new, not many, but most of them will be inside. If not all. We wouldn't leave any cars out front. I just want to leave you, you know, cuz there are times that you do have cars out front. You know, one or two cars. I, I don't want to say no, there's not gonna be any cars out there, and there is. So that's.
I understand, I just, I'm trying to get a sense of what this looks like. This looks like a car sales lot where there's a bunch of cars out front, or if it looks like a storefront where you park out front and then go in to see the cars.
No, no, definitely would like it to be that. I mean, I, I want it to look nice.
Mr. Chris, are there going to be any changes to exterior lighting from current conditions?
Reduced. All of the funky lighting go away. The red neon stuff and the lighting that you see on the canopy over on, on top there. So that's it. No, no additional lighting to be added.
As far, sir, as far as the lighting inside the store itself, typically after hours, what are you thinking? What is your thinking?
Well, we, what do you, your, your concern of light noise? You know, being really bright, very, very low. Tim, I wouldn't have it bright and, you know. Subtle, subtle light for showroom floor.
But there will be some after-hours lighting in the showroom?
Absolutely.
It's Commissioner Turner. I think in all fairness, if we look at Carl Chevrolet and the lighting and how the cars are illuminated, I, I, I can't imagine that the lighting would be so great or create that kind of brightness in this facility that we have existing next door.
Wouldn't be adding any more lighting inside. I mean, there, there's quite a few lights in there. It's pretty bright.
I think what we're getting at is for the interior, you know, for overnight lighting, let's call it that, post-business hours when no one's on at the space. Could it be, could it be zoned or modified so that you, you have, you know, fifty percent of the lights on or dimmed in such a way? We just don't want a, you know, a, a glowing showroom all night long, that's all.
Neither do I. No, I, I no, I agree.
Little question for Ms. Carey, is there any way the commission could require, let's say that most all lights go off between ten and ten PM and six AM? I don't, sort of bright lights at two in the morning. Is that something that's what we can do?
I mean, we can condition something like that, it's just the enforcement of the, bit of a challenge. But if that's something you think the law should be, that's fine.
The reason I bring it up, sir, is that I, I think maybe some concerns in the community, if you have even reasonably bright lights at two in the morning to show off the product, and I realize you want to highlight the product, but it becomes potential distraction.
No, we don't want to do that.
Thank you, sir.
Totally understand.
Signage, you understand signage is a separate application that you'll have to submit through zoning? Okay. And that applies to any kind of, I don't know if you're planning or any type of signage for the parking spots themselves in the lot. I don't know if you're gonna have any designated parking for anything in particular, so.
Even like, you know, you mean like a handicap sign, but not a handicap sign, I understand.
That's not required, but non-handicap, like, you know, visitor spaces or employee-only parking, stuff like that.
Okay. I, I hope I don't have to do that.
Okay.
Chairman Radman brings up a very good point. The elevation that we're looking at right now, you see these black rectilinear shapes that used to, I think, guide the you know, what lane was open for the tellers. Do you have any plans to eliminate those? Are you gonna change those to another kind of signage? What, what you're thinking on that?
Just remove and I just want to remove them.
Okay, so those will get removed and the facial will get patched?
Exactly, the facial will look, you know, like it was not even there, nonexistent. Anyway.
Gotcha. Commissioners, anything else? All right. Thank you.
Thank, you're welcome. Thank you.
Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak on this application? Anyone in Zoom land?
Can you just clarify this picture? Is this garage facing the back of the property or the front of the property?
It's actually facing the Acme building. If that helps you. Does that make sense?
The rear.
Yeah, the rear.
Okay.
You'll never see this from the road. Okay, thank you very much. This application's closed.
So you can vote on this now since we're regulating it?
We can, that's fine. Commissioners, let's, let's do that. Let's go right into a vote on this one. Any further deliberation, any additional comments or questions? I think we have a couple of concerns in terms of signage and lighting, but beyond that, anything in particular that we need to condition this on?
Lighting for me. Issue for me in the evening.
Right.
And we hours in the morning.
Over after-hours lighting?
Yes, sir.
There are a good number of, Commissioner Herring, there are a good number of mature trees in the property. Based on the street view, so adjacent to the Acme and then adjacent to Grove Street. Be great if we didn't have those down.
I would be careful with a condition like that, just because this isn't a special permit, this is just a site plan. And so we typically on site plans, usually not.
I won't touch those anyway. They won't be touched, they'll be pruned, but they won't be, they won't be taken down.
Appreciate that, thank you.
I don't see anything here that causes me a whole lot of concern, but I'm just wondering if we should condition things that we don't want on the exterior of the property, like storage of parts, oil, how many cars we want stored outside versus inside. Maybe that's going too far, I don't know, but I mean, he's not showing any of that, so maybe that's a non-issue, but I'm just saying, down the road, I would hate to see.
So we don't know if we can really limit, you know, if they have parking, if they have seven parking spaces in front of their building, we can't really say that you can't, can't have cars parked there and not their legal parking spaces.
Okay.
We're gonna, Commissioner Nielsen brings up the point of external storage, so the, the plan that's been submitted does not have any sheds or anything like that exterior. And so you could say what you're proposed would be approved, but you can't put anything else in the property.
Correct.
Would that satisfy your concern?
No accessory structures.
No, no accessory structures or sheds or other structures.
So I mean, accessory structures is kind of a given if you add anything, so is it outdoor storage that's?
Yeah, I was gonna say outdoor storage of parts, materials.
Oil tank outside or something.
I would be, I would be supportive of that.
Tires.
Yeah.
Good point, yeah.
I'd like to, I'm just not sure how to word it. I mean, the goal is that after-hours lighting is dimmed down to some percentage so that we don't have a, you know, a glowing showroom, but. without identifying a foot candle level, we can't really.
Fifty percent of interior lights are shut off after hours, and if that's not working, we'll come back.
That, that could work, yeah.
Between, how about this, uh, between, uh, Mr. Chairman, between the hours of ten P M and six A M. That, that's a fair boxing at the time. Yes. That would be my view as far as after hours.
It's the same timeframe that Acme goes dark as well. Ten P M to six A M is when Acme goes down.
That's a good point, so that's a good, that's a good issue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is it just the lighting and the outdoor storage right now?
And signage to be under separate permit. Kind of assumed. Yeah. Okay. All right. Anything else, Commissioners? All right, uh, let's bring it to a vote. Do I hear a motion?
Also move. Um, that we approve the site plan, if we could, maybe Mr. Chairman, because we walk through our conditions you wrote down.
Um, after-hours lighting to be limited to fifty percent of regular lighting between the hours of interior, uh, between the hours of ten and six A M, ten P M, six A M. And then we have um, no exterior storage on the site. This is separate from accessory structures, just no storage of any other uh, materials, tires, batteries, et cetera.
Those would be my two conditions for my. My most, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Art jumped in. We have a second. Anything else, Art?
No.
Conditions?
No.
All right, let's bring it to a vote. Uh, Dan Radman, I vote yes. Kristin Nielsen?
Yes.
Kent Turner?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Art Casavant?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
Uh, Tom, uh, sorry, Tom, you're not seated for this one, and Christine Larson?
Yes.
Thank you. You were approved.
Thank you, guys. You won't be disappointed, and I agree with you, son.
Good luck with your business.
Yes, good luck.
I appreciate it.
Be nice not having that property vacant.
Yes.
Welcome back.
Yeah. All right, uh, moving on, new business. We have uh, three seventy-seven North Wilton Road, better known as Saint Luke's. Uh, can I read both at the same? We'll hear both together. So we have a zoning regulation amendment and a special permit modification. Uh, first one is the zoning regulation amendment, three seventy-seven North Wilton Road, discussion and consideration of the request of Steve Finn, Wolfsey, Rosen, Kwensky, Questkin, and Kurianski, I hope I said those right, uh, L L P Authorized Agent for Saint Luke's Foundation Incorporated Owners for a zoning regulation amendment to the New Canaan Zoning Regulations dated June sixteenth, two thousand and seven, revised November twen- uh, tenth, twenty twenty-three. To amend section three point seven point E point two, to add section three point seven point E point two, point F. Single-level parking structures primarily used for passenger vehicles instructed underneath areas that are maintained as open space or athletic fields where the visual impact is mitigated by site design and the surrounding topography. Second part of this. Upon application of Stephen A. Finn, Wolfsey, Rosen, Questkin, Kurianski, L L P Authorized Agent for Saint Luke's Foundation Incorporated Owners um, for a site plan and special permit modification of section eight point two point B, six point four point G, and three point seven point E point two point F. Um, to allow construction of a surface-level parking garage directly beneath an existing artificial turf football field which will be renovated and elevated in the four-acre zone at three seventy-seven North Wilton Road, map forty, block one oh five, lots twelve ninety and one thirty-five. Wow, that's all works. Welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Steve Finn.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, seated uh, for this one. Uh, Mr. Benton, you'll be seated for this one as well.
Uh, for the record again, Steve Finn, I practice law with the law firm of Watson, Rosen, and Al. I'm here representing the applicant, uh, Saint Luke's School Foundation. With me here tonight are Mr. Christopher Rossow, who is Chair of the Board of Trustees at Saint Luke's. He's a gentleman in a blue blazer there. Immediately to my right is Julia Gabriel, Assistant Head of School and CFO for Saint Luke's. Uh, Melissa Flynn, who's seated all the way to the end. Uh, on my right is an engineer, S M R T Engineering located in Boston, Massachusetts. And our traffic engineer is immediately to my left. Uh, her name is Marissa Peralo of A K R F, which has offices in Stanford and New York, I believe. Uh, I'm gonna have some brief introductory remarks, and then I'm gonna turn it over to the team. Um, let's start off by saying that, uh, as most of you know, and maybe all of you know, Saint Luke's has been an important part of New Canaan for almost a hundred years. It has been its current location on North Wilton Road for over eighty years and is located in the four-acre zone. The use of the property as a school predates the zoning regulations and therefore is a permitted as-of-right use at its current location. Special permit uses in residential zones, like for example, Saint Luke's School, the Silvermine Guild for the Arts, the Nature Center, the Country College of New Canaan, Silver Hill Hospital, Country School of New Canaan, the Y M C A, the Glass House, and then, and then a few others. All greatly enhance the quality of life in New Canaan, and they are important contributors to our community. With that said, I'm gonna give you a quick introduction to the applications that are pending before you tonight. Uh, which concern the development of Engrage Parking Garage, plus to be constructed underneath an existing athletic field, which will be elevated and built on top of this parking structure. The applications are comprised of an application to amend the zoning regulations to include a provision that will encourage the preservation of open space and reduce the need for surface parking lots by exempting Engrage parking garages limited to one level from being included in coverage where they are preserving open space. And secondly, an application for an amendment to Saint Luke's special permit with an accompanying site plan application to build this parking structure at Saint Luke's School under an existing football field, which will be raised up to accommodate the one-level parking structure. The proposed parking structure will be located in a low part of the campus, will not be easily seen from the road and is blocked or substantially blocked from view, not only on the Saint Luke's School campus, but also from neighboring properties. Uh, thank you for allowing me to give you that brief introduction. I'm now gonna chair, uh, turn it over to the, uh, Chair of the Board of Trustees at Saint Luke's School, Christopher Rossow.
Thank you, Attorney Finn. Uh, good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for being here with us tonight. Uh, my name again, for the record, is Christopher Rossow, and I am the Chair of the Saint Luke's Board of Trustees. I've served on board since two thousand and eighteen, and I've been a Saint Luke's parent since two thousand and sixteen. Uh, two of my children have already graduated from the school, and my youngest child is in tenth grade. She has attended Saint Luke's School since fifth grade. That's all to say that my family and I have made a very deep connection with Saint Luke's. We remain committed to the school because of its mission of fostering an exceptional education, a strong moral compass, confidence in leadership, and a commitment to service. And that last one, a service mindset, is, has made a mark on us, and it's not just marketing words. The school offers so much without only its families and the communities. Events like hosting authors and luminaries and speakers and so forth, open to all, providing field space and dream space to kids and adults who are not part of the school community, part of the larger community, working closely with first responders and much, much more. I don't want to be immodest, but Saint Luke's is a real contributor to the community. And so in that service mindset, it's a privilege for me to introduce, well, the second introduce, uh, this school's proposed elevated field to tonight. So as you know, from the application materials and from Attorney Finn's introduction, we're proposing to elevate the surface of an existing field. We'll construct a platform for this, the field surface, and beneath the platform at the existing grade of the existing field, we propose to create parking. And in turn, and very importantly, that additional parking gives us the opportunity to convert an existing parking lot to what we've been referring to as a pickup corral, open-laned lot where parents can wait in their cars to pick up their kids, and importantly, wait on campus instead of backed up on North Wilton Road. So that's a very quick summary, and of course, we're gonna get into the details, but first, by way of background and introduction, I'd like to start with a brief history of where we got to where we are this evening. Um, it's an interesting artifact of history that the area that we're, we were discussing tonight was back in the nineteen eighties and for a parking lot. This area was converted to a grass field in nineteen ninety-six. In two thousand and four, the school constructed an athletic center adjacent to the field, and in two thousand and five, that field was converted to artificial turf. That turf was expected to last fifteen years, so two thousand and five plus fifteen, about twenty twenty, and while we've swept a few more years of life from the turf, we can't force more resilience into the underlying substrate, which has deteriorated to the point that sinkholes have developed underneath the layer of turf. These sinkholes are caused by degrading organic material, which has been decomposing since the eighties or so, and these sinkholes began to appear in late twenty twenty. So in twenty twenty-one, as we looked at ways to not only replace the turf, we also, but also to replace the substrate, we asked ourselves, instead of digging out tons and tons of substrate, what if we simply built a pad for the new field? And then we asked, what if we lifted that pad up in the air? And that was the eureka moment, so to speak. Not only could we use the space created under the field to solve for an existing shortfall of parking spaces on campus, we could also resolve the traffic backups on North Wilton Road. And you might ask, how does a field affect traffic? And that's a fair question, and it, and it's answered, because we moved the cars that we have parked exist on an existing surface lot, and we parked them under the elevated field, and then we convert that lot to our so-called pickup corral. And this corral idea is not new. You, you've perhaps been in one loading on a ferry, for example, cars queue in lanes very compactly. It's a very efficient use of space, and in our analysis, would eliminate the afternoon backups of waiting cars on North Wilton Road. So as the details evolved and were tested again and again, we came to nickname the project Smart Field. We doubled the space of an existing improved area from field only to field and parking with a low-profile structure nestled into the side of an existing hill. Smart. We converted the use of an existing parking lot to a traffic management lot in order to benefit not only our community, but to benefit our neighbors and the larger community beyond who travel on North Wilton Road. Also smart. And we can do it all without mass clearcutting of trees and digging out tons of dirt. We have a shortfall of parking on our campus. We use our tennis courts when we can as overflow parking, and that's a temporary fix and not a very good one. And at the same time, we'd like to avoid building another surface parking. We don't want a paved paradise to put up parking lots, as the song goes. And even that would be, that clearcutting and, and surface parking would be less expensive for us. We'd like to invest in hiding additional parking under the green space. We think that's smart, too, and it's the right approach for us, for our neighborhood, and for the town. So we began working earnestly on this project in twenty twenty-two, as we realized this idea had some real promise, and by late twenty twenty-two, we had renderings. The exact same renderings which are in the application before you tonight. In our annual meeting with neighbors, which was held early, uh, in January earlier this year, we showed those exact renderings, uh, before and after sequence that really illustrates how the elevated field, how low-profile the elevated field is, how it hides parking, and how it successfully creates our traffic management corral on an existing lot. We hosted the second meeting with neighbors in October and again displayed those same renderings. And I think that once neighbors understood the concept, it's been my impression that most of our neighbors are pleased with the idea. But we, of course, have a few that have continued to express concern, and I'm hopeful that with our full application now complete, their questions have been answered, or if not, we look forward to addressing those questions in the course of these meetings here tonight, and perhaps the hour. One question that did come up in our October meeting, which I hope I answered clearly, but I'd like to address again in the, in, in, in the, in the interest of transparency. During the pandemic, Saint Luke's acquired three residential properties on Deep Valley Road as we look to diversify our endowment from just stocks and bonds and invest in real estate. And there are few real estate markets as strong as the one here in New Canaan and Fairfield County. We rented those houses out, and we're pleased with our returns. Let me be clear. While we have no plans for those properties at the moment other than investments, they do offer some level of optionality to the school. And yet, that optionality is not at our sole discretion. If at some point in the future the school decides to change course, we would back, be back in front of the town commissions for a thorough public review of whatever would be proposed there. One or two of our neighbors accused me personally of being sneaky and buying those properties, so I'd like to take a moment to refute that, hopefully once and for all. We made no effort to keep this a secret. Uh, and, and if that was the case, certainly we would have been smart enough, uh, not to service and maintain those properties with our maintenance crews and our staff members wearing Saint Luke's uniforms and using Saint Luke's email addresses. Um, so back on track, and before I turn this over to the experts, as Board Chair, I do want to address a question that will certainly come up later, and that is enrollment. It's a logical question. So Saint Luke's adds this parking. They must be planning on expanding the school. Uh, my answer to that might feel at first like a deflection, because my answer is, I don't know, because I can't predict the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years into the future. But what I do know, and what I'm sure you've noticed in our application, is that there are no classrooms proposed, no new teaching areas, no new student common space. And I know that an enrollment condition was put in place in twenty thirteen very wisely with a prior approval by this commission, and that condition is working, and it clearly remains applicable as a significant check and balance to our enrollment. So with that all said, we're very confident that our Smart Field project, together with its traffic management solution, would be successful and would be a real benefit to not only us, but also to our neighborhood. So thank you, and I'll turn it back over to Attorney Finn.
Thank you very much. Uh. Mr. Chairman, point, point of order, um. I think it's probably logical at this point, but I'm, I'm looking for your input that to go in and actually have the engineer present to you next. Theoretically, we could go back over the two thousand and thirteen approval and the traffic study that was done first, which is something we had to do, and is, should be vetted by this commission. So we could start with that. I think maybe you're anxious to hear the presentation of the engineering. If you're okay with that, that's, that's the way we're gonna go. Uh, if you have a different thing in mind, we're, we're happy to accommodate.
Let's keep going with the, um, with the presentation from the engineer.
Thank you.
Really understanding the scope of the project, and then at the tail end, we can come back to the previous approvals and conditions and how they were or weren't met.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, Melissa Flynn of S M R T, would you, uh, please take over?
Worked yesterday, so we'll see if I can get to work again. Yeah, so I'm, I'm Melissa Flynn, I'm a civil engineer with S M R T Architects and Engineers. Uh, Steve and Chris gave a great introduction, so I don't need to harp on any of those overall things. Uh, so really existing conditions and really kind of getting a lay of the land of the site, obviously, um, the commission is well aware of Saint Luke's um, throughout, through many other applications. Uh, our firm actually did the lower field and the upper field, um, as well as some interior renovations, so we're well well-versed in the campus as well. Uh, so to write on this photo is the, is Watson Field that we're talking about, uh, the upper field right here, and then the athletic center, um, and then the academic building. Uh, so again, just another context map of North Wilton, Willow, War- North Wilton Road, um, and our project location. Uh, the total disturbance is about three acres, which includes the field renovation, as well as that corral parking, um, that we'll be discussing in a moment. And then here is just, uh, the same photo or the same scale, just with the aerial, since the picture is worth a thousand words, and some of the renderings really are gonna really help with that, yes.
Did you point out the three houses off Deep Valley that you own in that picture? I do not believe they're within the red line.
No, they're not. Uh, I can point out one, which is right here. And then there's one down here. Uh, one eighty-two, one ninety-five, and one ninety-seven Deep Valley are owned by affiliates. That affiliated LLCs, they're not owned, you know, by name by Saint Luke's Foundation. Again, for the record, I'm Christopher Rossow.
This Commissioner Chris again, the, uh, three houses, those the ones that have a shared driveway at the end of Deep Valley?
Uh, two of them have a shared driveway. There's a third off that shared driveway, which we are not related with the, the third. Uh, one eighty-two shares a driveway with, not off the cul-de-sac, but shares a driveway with the neighbor to their left.
Thank you. Sorry.
Oh, no, no, no problem, please. And again, as I'm going, please ask questions. Um, I do much better than that than just yelling and talking as I'm going. Uh, so again, zooming in a little bit onto our site, um, this is the existing football field, there's the existing, uh, practice field to. Um, this is the existing football field, there's the existing practice field to the south of the site, which is a uh, a hundred by a hundred foot turf field. There's an exist, it is an existing synthetic turf field, as Chris mentioned, built in two thousand and six. So it's a not the same twelve inches of crushed stone as you may have seen on other more recent synthetic turf fields. Uh, it's outletted to the wetland on the west side at these three points right here. Um, and the grandstand is about thirteen feet uh, into this hill here, and then we have another um, fifteen feet up to the upper upper field, and the wetlands are about twenty feet down from the synthetic turf fields around four forty per elevation. And then just for some variance, here's our the drop-ups are full and then the maintenance are, um, that we will see in a minute. Um, so again, just looking at the the parking level, so again, this is.
Excuse me, it's Commissioner Turner. Um, it would appear that there are three places that, um, everything is draining from this surface right next to the wetlands. Where where does that go?
Uh, that flows into the wetlands. So it's three.
But I how how can that?
Overall, uh, so going back, um, it flows into the wetland, which is west of our site here into this man-made um, pond, and then there's a culvert that goes under campus, and then it goes um, through campus out to the group's reservoir.
So, um, my my question is, um, what environmental protection, what are codes are you conforming to that you can dump this water that comes from a artificial turf into wetlands?
Um, so the the previous project was approved again in two thousand and six. The other two, uh, fields on campus are synthetic turf, the same system. These were, um, reviewed and approved by the inland wetland commissions. They meet the Connecticut DEP, DEEP standards during construction. You have your construction general permit to, um, maintain and protect the wetlands. Um, but we're meeting all the standards of the peak flow and water quality requirements from synthetic turf. There are no harmful, um, outflows into the wetlands as a result of, um, of waterfalling onto the field and into the wetlands.
And thank you, thank you for that information. Um, I I just I'm concerned that, you know, we have a much different project. There's a different, uh, amount of flow that will go into those receptors. Um, they have new petrochemicals, they have new new new, um, affluent that flows into them. What, um, doesn't it make sense to? And I'm not saying it, you know, it can't be done, but doesn't it make sense to have to update?
Yes.
And not rely on something that was approved previously?
Uh, correct, and we are going to be updating the stormwater treatment system for the parking level and the, uh, field level. I just haven't got there yet.
Uh, Mr. Turner, if I may, this is Steve Finn for the record. So we, uh, we actually presented, uh, to the inland wetlands commission last night, the this the exact project. And, uh, you'll be getting a a report or a decision from them before you have to make a decision on these applications. That's the way it works under, uh, your regulations and the Connecticut general statutes. Uh, we've had a inland wetland scientist opine, and importantly, Maria Coplet, the town engineer, has been, uh, fully analyzing the system, making some suggestions that are going to be incorporated. And, uh, frankly, I think this system, uh, this drainage system, these retention devices are going to represent a improvement over existing and will not have any negative impact on the wetlands. Uh, bear in mind that the construction is not going to be in the wetlands itself. It's going to be in the wetlands buffer. That still requires, uh, conformance with certain inland wetlands regulations, and we will, uh, make sure that we do that. Uh, I I hope that helps to alleviate your concern. Again, Maria Coplet will be sounding in. Uh, we have to wait for final sign up, sign off from her that would comply with the drainage policy of the town in Canaan and, uh, certain, uh, guidelines put out, uh, by the state of Connecticut.
Yep, and I I appreciate that. Um, I think that we're owed, or, you know, we we need to see the justification, you know, what are the metrics? The engineering calculations, hydrology, um, that protect the wetlands. That that's really what I'm getting at. And I hope through these reports that everybody is weighing in on, um, address that.
Yes, the the stormwater report that was submitted with the, um, application addresses the uh, stormwater quality and the stormwater, um, quantity management. So we're meeting all of that, um, with new systems that I was just about to get into on each level.
But before you do that, I have a a quick question. This is Commissioner Cassman. The map, um, which proceeds out, the topographic drawing indicates that the property for Saint Luke's goes out to Soundview. Is that correct? Am I reading that correctly?
The one seventy-four Soundview, I'm sorry.
You've acquired, you've acquired one seventy.
Seventy-four Soundview was acquired many years ago and was used, uh, was was part of a previous application.
But I I just wanted to make certain that I was reading that diagram properly. Thank you.
And just just to be clear, um, Mr. Turner, uh, we will most likely not be voting on this application tonight. We will be waiting for the wetlands commission to submit their report, uh, weigh in on it.
We can't.
Yeah, we have to wait. So, um, I think there's going to be plenty of due process to make sure that everything they're proposing in terms of rainwater runoff is in compliance for the wetlands.
Thank you.
Keep going.
So yeah, just trying to orient us where we are in the field and then, um, getting into to what the system is and what the project really is proposing. Um, as Chris mentioned, the the footprint of the parking lot is uh, seventy-one thousand square feet, and this is within the boundaries of the existing field. Um, we're not encroaching on that wetland going to the west down into the or the slope down into the west, going down to the wetland or up into the campus on the east side. Um, so that's where, uh, this next slide shows the um, the field level, which is ten feet elevated above the parking level. Um, again, and this is cantilever, there's going to be a section in a minute that clarifies this a little bit, but this is, um, the field area is at eighty thousand square feet. And really, this was kind of the crux of where, um, as Chris mentioned, that kind of stepping up and thinking outside the box is the existing field isn't regulation, uh, for safety runout, it's regulation sidelines, but there's only two or three feet on the edges, so your lacrosse players are only getting two feet till they're hitting that fence. So this expanded sideline, um, allows ten feet of runout to allow for much safer play, um, which again was one of the big drivers, and, um, we didn't want to go into that wetland regulated area, um, at all. So, um, this helps us be it up in the air and where our foundations and our, um, columns are going to be in that already disturbed area at the parking level. Uh, the practice area is going to remain at, um, ground level. Uh, and then the just taking a little sidebar from the field area, this is the corral parking. So that's what Chris had mentioned, we're taking those, uh, thirty-six spaces, removing, uh, four of the um, landscaped islands and turning into that corral parking. Um, this is about an increase of eleven hundred square feet of impervious area. Um, and then we're taking the driveway area, treating that with a, uh, sand filter, a perimeter sand filter to treat that, which we've reviewed with, uh, Maria at the, um, engineering department. Um, and then so flipping back to the field, where again, where the the section is really again, a picture's worth a thousand words. Um, this area right here, so this is the, uh, existing existing field level is going to be our parking level, and then our our field is ten feet above it here.
This is this is a section on the west side?
This is a section along the west side, so then here's our wetland, um, elevation down here. So it's an existing boulder slope that, um, was was built when the, uh, field was filled back in the nineteen nineties. Uh, the photo on the the top here is on the wetland side, so you're looking at the 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 back of the fence. Um, and then down here on the photo on the bottom shows the obviously the field side. So again, you could see this yellow line here is, um, the sideline for lacrosse, and you have about two feet till you till you hit that fence.
I'm sorry for interrupting. It's Commissioner Turner. Um, I see that there's a scupper that, uh, will allow anything runoff from the parking garage to drop into the zone. Um, uh, I, you know, I'm puzzled by, um, a very simplistic economical solution, but yet exposing what you show are trees and the environment. I think the thought further and maybe another solution?
So this is being collected by a gutter system along each side of the 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 sidelines of the field. Uh, there's four downspouts, so roofly, it's the same way that we would drain a building structure with roof leaders coming down, and then those get directed and collected underneath the um, at the parking level and then get brought into a subsurface storage system before outletting into the, uh, wetlands. So there'll be an emergency scupper where the very large storms are, but that first flush is going into the ground, into the roof leader, into the closed system underneath the field, into the stormwater system, and then out with it.
Thank you, but this section doesn't show any kind of collection for the that runoff. It shows it goes to the footing, which would undermine your structure. And, uh, based on our, you know, what we've been experiencing about, uh, our environmental changes, um, this is a very simplistic solution to something that will not address the kinds of events that we've been have experienced even in the last few days.
Is there a, is this is a Chairman Redd, is there a different drawing that might show the um, the subsurface piping and collection and containment systems? I'm kind of scrolling through the deck, but I don't see it.
You know, what what we're seeing are, you know, basic code requirements, but they don't address what we need as a community and to, um, plan for the future.
Sorry, just trying to make this a, uh, weird for. Uh, so this is this was the the slide that was presented, um, yesterday at the inland wetlands that shows it in a little more detail. So this is the, there's four roof leaders on each side of the, um, field that get collected by that that gutter along the side. These have been sized, um, using, um, the same, again, the same as a as a roof. Uh, it's an impervious area, it gets collected, the they think they're.
I'm 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 sorry for interrupting, but they get collected, but where do they go?
They get, uh, so they get collected, get routed down into a couple cleanouts underneath, uh, get collected through a manhole, so it's magenta line, and then it gets, um, uh, discharged into the this large subsurface storage system. Um, so it's the contact units as we have, um, so it holds back the water and meters it out, um, like you do any any building, so it's not just dumping the water right into there. So this is, this is, um, ninety-six, um, storm tech units, um, which are sized again for the the complement of, uh, Connecticut DEP requirements for peak flow and, um, for peak flow that were going to be below the existing condition.
And that's on sheet CG one hundred?
CG one hundred.
I mean, I I understand the concept, but I don't see in the drawings how, um, this is collected. Um, it it it, you you have scuppers, th- those are overflow. They go basically over the site and drop down.
And then there there's four, within the gutter, there's four roof lead downspouts that then take an elbow left into the, um, parking area and connect into a structure that connects into a twelve-inch, um, storm drain line that then gets routed through here going south to this kind of junction point right here. Um, and then gets outletted to our subsurface system.
So there's.
So why do we need the overflow scuppers?
For the the storm yesterday.
Well, those scuppers, those, if I'm reading your section correctly, those are are they, well, they're continuous, right? They're along the length of the long direction on both sides or on both sides?
The the field is crowned, um, so.
Which which then lead to a continuous gutter along both sides?
Yes.
Right? So if that gutter overflows, then it's just gonna overflow. And those gutters are what's leading to the four roof leaders going down into the system?
Yes.
Okay, so what what's the, um, design criteria as far as the storm? You know, is it yesterday's storm? Is it, um, a hundred-year storm? What?
Uh, yes, it's the it's the it's the one year, the two year, the twenty-five year, the hundred year. It's the the Connecticut DEP standards and your, um, inland wetland standard for the town. Um, again, this is, these are items we've reviewed with Maria. Um, she has her report, she's provided some initial comments, um, that we're responding to. I missed providing the one-year report of the one-year storm. Um, so we're going to be following up with that, but this is size for the hundred-year storm.
I do just want to jump in and clarify for, um, everyone that this doesn't move forward if it doesn't get approval from the town engineer. It has to meet the town drainage policy, and, uh, this isn't the final draft, I assume, you know, because there were comments from Maria. Um, but so again, this is, this is the first draft is my understanding, and.
Yeah, and we and we can, in addition to Maria's comments, we can request additional information as well.
Yeah.
Understood.
I have a question, if I may, it's key from Chris. So if I understand the sort of placement of this proposed field is that the, um, long edge of the field that's close to the buildings, do it that way, is states essentially where it is. The expansion of the sidelines will all be part of something that will be heading, uh, towards the west and will be essentially cantilevered out.
Uh, it's actually cantilevered on both sides.
Both sides, okay.
So the the hatch, this gravel, um, area, for lack of a better word, it does hang over onto the that hillside as it goes up.
And part of the cantilever, or I don't know how much of it, but, uh, cantilever on the, uh, west side will be, uh, within the up and review area.
Correct, and that's, we presented that last night, we've been reviewing that with, uh, within the wetlands.
And so the part under the cantilever is the rocky forty-five-degree slope that you talked about?
Correct.
That's the one along that long edge?
Part of it, yeah. The boulder, uh, field goes goes past where the cantilever is.
Okay, thank you, Mr.
And the one image that you had, um, showing the inside and the outside of the existing fencing?
Yes.
Chain link fencing, and you had the black privacy mesh or netting on there? Uh, will the new fencing that's along, oh, along three sides, I think? Um, will that also have the the black privacy mesh or netting on there?
Yeah, we'll get to the, can we go, sorry, Christopher Russell, again, for the record, uh, kid now, maybe when we get to the field level in the in the drawings and the pictures?
Sure.
We'll we'll get to the fencing as well.
So, yeah.
So, bro. One further question, if I may, is Commissioner Chris again, it was mentioned, uh, in your earlier, your initial comments are that there's some decaying organic matter under the current field, is that correct?
That is correct.
I'm hearing that usually decaying matter is something that was dumped there or left there. Uh, and, um, tends to generate methane and other other nasty things. Um, exactly what is under the field now, I'm wondering about the soil conditions and perhaps environmental issues that we should be thinking about. Could you share any thoughts, please?
Sir, Christopher also again for the record, uh, we we did drill nine thirteen, all right, test hole.
We did, we did three, and then we did nine, uh, this is Melissa Plin.
Twelve, so we've drilled twelve test holes into the subsurface. This isn't part of the due diligence to say, okay, what are our options in terms of replacing the field in, you know, added to the existing grade, just as the field, same size.
Yes.
And we learned through those test holes that there the presence of organic materials like wood, like stumps or logs or something that been used as fill when this area was created back. or something that been used as fill when this area was created back in the nineteen eighties, nineteen nineties. Uh, so we, we don't, from our test holes, we can see that there is, you know, they can see sand and different types of dirt and they can find herb organics as they, as they drill down. It's our belief, although we, we, without digging out the entire field, we could never know this for sure. But it's our belief that's what's happening is those organics are decomposing and they collapse because, and then they create a void and then the material above collapses into that void, which creates a sinkhole at the turf level. And the interesting thing about the, the sinkhole is the sink, the turf is a, is a carpet essentially, right? So when the substrate collapses, you don't see that depression until somebody steps on. And then, then the carpet collapses into this, into the sink. Uh, it, it's not our belief that there's any nasty down there because we, we feel like it was filled with just some bad fill, you know, not
Construction debris and
Exactly.
And our, I think again, this is Melissa Flynn, we have the, the two um, two technical reports are included in attachments to the uh, stormwater report. So again, that, based on those investigation, it's, it's water infiltration that we think is, is causing that. And again, covering this area and not allowing the water to infiltrate along this uh, large rectangle. We think it's gonna minimize that or slow down that breakdown of those future um, areas. And, and that leads to our construction methods of the um, the foundations that we're going to be installing. Um, again, knowing that we need to be cognizant of, instead of a, a mass excavation was really what we were trying to avoid um, with this, this whole approach. So it'll be the targeted um, foundations um, with which we counted yesterday, a hundred and four. Um, instead of a mass kind of slab as you'd have in a building. So we're just gonna have um, those foundations along the um, which will be designed, of course, to support. And we did find enough structural um, to depth that we could successfully build this and not worry about putting this building or this structure on something that was going to fail.
One more question, I mean, on, on a different topic. Um, is, is St. Luke's aware uh, of any or would anticipate uh, any um, archaeological or historic items that are sort of buried in this area? Arrowheads, former indigenous campsite, anything like this that could create a challenge?
Uh, hi, yes, for the writer Julia Gabriel, I'm associate head of school CFO and I've taught archaeology at the school. And in fact, with Nick Ballantoni, who's the state archaeologist, I get first, that gets actually former, he's a new state archaeologist. But I've worked trying to find sites, we actually have taught and, and have not been able to find anything on campus. Um, and have done the history, had the kids do the history, and it was not a sensitive site. Uh, but have had, have had conversations with Nick, Nick Ballantoni over the years and taught actually archaeology on campus.
Yes, you answered, thank you.
Uh, so while we're sitting with, with stormwater, um, I will quickly explain. So that's dealing with the impervious, the eighty thousand square feet of impervious that we're adding due to the field. Um, the second part is dealing with the parking lot area. Um, so this seventy-one thousand square feet. Um, and in order to deal, again, this is more of a dirty runoff, as we like to call it in the stormwater world that, because you have your runoff from your oils or things like that from the cars. So underneath the, the structure, we have four um, deep subcatch basins, which is a little atypical for underneath the um, you know, parking garage, you want to find those, but um, since it is an outside condition, we're adding those. It's gonna go through an oil sand interceptor into a separate subsurface storage system before it outlets to the wetlands. So we have a couple checks and balances and felt the suspenders for that um, water quality piece. Uh, so I'm gonna, this is, we jumped back uh, a little in the presentation. Again, I'll go back to this slide here that, start from um, getting back to, to this part, getting back to your fence question. Um, so that's really the, the stormwater, so we're dealing it at the two levels. Um, at the upper level, that large storage system underneath the existing uh, practice area that it's gonna be remain and we install this turf and then underneath for treating it with the deep subcatch basins and oil sand separator. Um, and then the
I'm sorry, it's Commissioner Turner. Um, I'm looking at the section and I'm looking at the photographs and I'm not connecting the two. Can you please clarify that?
Sure. So the um, so this section elevation, the, the field is on the left. So the field is essentially this, the same view as this lower one, this lower photo. Um, and the column will essentially be right where the inboard of the existing fence now. So the, if we were, if I was to draw, so this dashed line right here is the existing fence. So this right here matches this, this post right here. So this will be built up and out here.
Okay, but um, I'm sorry, maybe I wasn't clear enough, but um, the overflow from the scupper falls down beyond this fence. What, what are you doing to collect mitigate that impact?
Yeah.
I, 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 Commissioner Turner, this is Christopher Russell again. If you, if you're looking at the, at the section drawing, you see the scupper and then to the right of the scupper, you see a gutter. And then that gutter follows the line, two lines, which are representative of, of a weeder. That weeder, as you pointed out earlier, appears to terminate at the footing. That does not, that, that terminates in the, in the drawing that Melissa showed us earlier of the stormwater detention system. So the water coming off the field level goes into a gutter, then goes down through leaders into a subsurface stormwater detention system. It does not, in normal use, flow directly into the wetland.
Okay, I, I, I appreciate your description, but the um, rainwater leader is very small. When we have events like yesterday, um, that rainwater leader cannot handle that capacity, that volume of liquid. Um, and the drawing doesn't show where uh, where it goes. You know, it, it, it shows it dumping onto the footing, which is a, you know, very
But, but again
concerning thing.
It doesn't dump into the, it, it's a, it's a defect of the drawing, not a defect of the design. So the, the, the drawing could be improved and I'm sure we could, we could submit an amended drawing to show the actual uh, subsurface um, pipes that pick up those leaders and pick up the water flowing into the gutters. Um, and I, and I would think that also we can quantify as the stormwater report quantifies the size of both gutter and leader to be adequate to pick up the hundred year storm of it.
I, thank you. I would love to see um, an oversized leader that can capture that capacity of water based on the storms we're seeing and where they go. Thank you.
This is Melissa Flynn, the um, the, the storm report is, we're treating the hundred year storm. We're using the new NOAA extreme numbers, um, which was in the um, new uh general permit that's required. It's an upgrade from the Connecticut standard, so it's a larger for the fifty year and hundred year. Uh, but we could certainly, we can review with Maria if uh, an additional excess requirement is conceded.
And uh, you know, I, I appreciate what you're saying. Um, the code requires something that is perhaps not together or uh, updated to what is happening today. Um, we're only suggesting that you plan for the future and that you do everything you can to anticipate where the trend is as far as rain runoff and what's happening. It's, it's just a simple request. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so our, our next couple slides are again, just trying to give a picture, um, again, of the um the before and after. Uh, so this is again, kind of hovering above the, the corral parking as we were talking. Um, and again, as, as um, Steve and Chris have mentioned, how this is nestled into the um, into the site and not um, very obnoxious or observant to the, the neighbors. Uh, you'll see in this section, there's a four foot or a two foot knee wall. That's what this, this section, this white part is. There's a four foot chain link fence, and on top of that chain link fence is twelve feet of ball safety netting. So our total height of, from the top of all safety netting to parking level is twenty-six feet. So within the zoning requirements um, for that. But again, um, to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, the um, the, there's a four foot high fence on top of this with additional ball safety netting. Um, which as you could see in that previous photo, there's only six feet of fencing, so this should help eliminate a lot less balls going down into the wetland area.
Commissioner Chris again, um, as I understood your, your uh, drawings and um, photographs or these photographs that on the um, cantilevered part that's in the upland review area, it would require the elimination of a number of trees. Uh, one, is that the case? And if so, could you go into a bit more detail on exactly what uh, what's gonna have to go?
Um, yes, and that question was brought up yesterday at our um, inland wetlands and we've reached out to our surveyor and our uh, wetland scientist who's gonna flag the trees that are um, the ten inch ones that are the significant ones per the regulation. So we can follow up with how many trees exactly need to be removed. Um, it's about a ten foot to twelve foot area off of that fence um, that runs parallel to the entire field. So it's only that ten, ten to twelve feet um, into the slope where the trees will need to be removed.
I suggest, ma'am, that perhaps it might need to be more, since if you have a relatively tall tree with a large spread of branches, it's gonna bang up against your fence, which I don't think you're gonna want. So uh, it's sort of like cutting back trees around a, a power line, same, same concept. So it may be more than just the ones that gotta go because there's construction there, but ones that will simply damage other installations. That's my thinking. You're, I think you're agreeing with that.
Yes, yes, then we're, we're gonna, we're, we're flagging the ones that are, are actually fifteen feet out to get, to get a sense of it. And maybe the ones that are fifteen out are the ones that need to be pruned, but they will remain.
Good, thank you.
That, 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 that came up. Um, we heard that loud and clear yesterday. So that was a big follow-up for us, um, for the inland wetlands.
Thank you.
Uh, so the, the next couple of slides are just up
Before you keep going, going back to my question on the, the netting and the fence heights and everything. So on, and I'm specifically talking about the west side, but I guess it's typical all the way around. You have a spandrel beam as part of the concrete, concrete structure that's an upturned knee wall that's two feet above the uh, playing surface, right?
Yes.
So and on top of that, you have a, a four foot chain link fence. And then above that, an additional twelve feet of netting. So of the total of sixteen feet, will any of that have the black privacy mesh that was in some of those earlier images?
I, I believe that's our, Christopher Russell again for the record, I believe that's padding, so for, for runout padding, and I believe we have padding.
Yeah.
The length of the chain length. So for four feet high, that's, you know, it's, it's a shock absorber and padding, not, it's fully enough for privacy. It's to protect kids that are playing sports on the lower four foot chain link fence.
On the lower four foot portion?
Yes, not on the ball safety.
And what is it, what is it currently? The height of all that padding and fencing?
Uh, currently it's six feet.
Six feet.
But it's, it's not six, six feet because we've got the two foot knee wall plus the
Uh, currently.
Yeah, right. So currently it's a six foot high fence. The proposed is, is two feet of curb.
Right, 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 right. Got it, thank you. This is Commissioner Chris for the question. You, you mentioned, if I remember, that um, you, your assertion is that given the location of the proposed uh, build, that it won't be very visible. Have you performed any um, uh, photographs, for example, with uh, you know, assumptions of the height of the uh fencing and netting from various vantage points around the property to get a sense of whether it might be visible or not?
Uh, yes.
If so, to what degree?
Um, there's, the next three slides are, are different vantage points.
It looks like a drone shot.
This, this is a, this is a drone shot, so this was uh, flowing last October.
I was thinking more from a neighbor viewpoint as opposed to a drone, but go ahead.
And I could address that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Chris, Christopher Russell for the record, uh, I visited uh, two of the neighbors' properties last April. Uh, one was not present when I visited, I had permission to be at the residence that was on Lowell Road. And I visited uh, the collusion residence at uh, two thirty, uh, two seventy-nine North Golden Road, seventy-nine? Seventy-three, two seventy-three North Golden Road, and I met with uh, Dr. Kavuzian. Then uh, we toured his property, we stood next to his screen porch and I asked if I could take a picture and he said no. So we did not generate a rendering from his perspective because he didn't permit me to take a picture. Uh, so we do not have something like that for the record.
Um, not, not yet. Thank you, that's my question, appreciate it.
Again, these, these are just the um, this, this image shows a little bit more of the corral parking area uh, where we're, we're lining that up. Um, again, this is hovering above the, the maintenance shed. Um, and then this is a last picture, uh, again, all the way out showing the, almost the extent of the, at least the developed part of campus. Um, showing the equipment here, showing the full extent of the corral parking.
Can you, I'm not sure if it's part of your discussion, is Chris Herring, um, Commissioner. I just see you have a lot of cars parked on uh, tennis spots there, which is not something we typically see in applications. So can you explain just what your anticipated car coverage is? Because it seemed like the garage is about two hundred spots and you're removing forty-five spots, so it seems like can you just give us a overall narrative as to what you're trying to do?
Segue, because I, this, I was wrapping up my portion and Marissa, our traffic engineer can uh, talk in much
So I was just trying to understand, and maybe it actually goes to, to you, the chairman, like, so is the, is the, is the goal to reduce traffic? Or is it to absorb more traffic? Or are there other mitigation strategies you're using to produce? I guess the flow or what, what's the overall strategy?
Sure, uh, Christopher also again for the record, fair question, and, and I will definitely turn this over to Marissa, the expert who is on traffic. But our intention is St. Luke's is to remove traffic from North, to remove the backups that occur on North Golden Road when our kids are being picked up in the afternoon. Our morning drop off flows very smoothly as our traffic study will show, and Marissa will, will, will explain more later. Uh, we do have cars backed up on North Golden Road. So the solution that, that, the Eureka moment that I talked about when I, when we started was if we could convert the lot that you see on the top, on the sort of medium right of the picture, which we now show as a corral, that's an existing lot that holds thirty-six vehicles. We, we put forty-five cars in there in a corral system in the afternoon almost. And that is gonna pull those cars off of North Golden Road. We'll, we'll go through the map on that with the traffic study. And the way we do that, because we've already got a shortfall of camp, of parking on campus, which we saw for, by parking cars on the tennis courts, which you see in this, this photograph as well. Um, with, the, the, the Eureka Mullen was if we lift the field, we create two hundred spots underneath that we can we can afford, if you will, to take those thirty-six spots that are currently used as service parking, turn them into the corral in order to create this traffic management solution and also get those cars off the tennis courts that are parking there. So we're, we have upwards of eighty cars parked in the tennis courts, uh, which is about as many as we can fit there. So we're moving all those vehicles underneath the elevated field. That was the intent of the, of the idea.
Okay, and, and then even more macro than that, like do you ever anticipate um, providing a school bus or is it all?
We, we have, we have buses. So we have a, we, so St. Luke's draws from thirty-eight towns across Connecticut and New York. So it's not quite as simple as a, as a local school that can only draw from one town where you can actually create a logical bus route that would, would pick up kids in a, in a logical manner. So because we draw from such a long distance, some kids are on the bus, uh, but a lot of kids are dropped off by parents. So we have, we don't see a change in that routine. We don't see as busing as a viable alternative to get cars off the road. So therefore, we're coming up with this solution, which is instead of having the cars backed up and waiting on the road, have them backed up and waiting on campus. So they're not blocking Northwood. But net change to traffic in the, you know, through the roads coming into community. And again, Marissa's gonna talk to that as well. Potentially goes down because now we've got cars that can remain on campus as opposed to coming in, leaving, coming in and leaving in the afternoon.
And, and do, do the students, so some students drive, some parents drive, some teachers drive? And, and so that's, I wasn't sure if you were kind of looking at it from a off-campus sort of satellite perspective as well. So that's good to hear. So there's not really a satellite situation as to, you know, parking in town and the pattern.
Uh, I, I, I will confess that I'm sure there are a number of kids, our, our seniors are the only ones who are permitted to park on campus. And I would imagine, given that I have a daughter who is about to be a junior and will have her driver's license soon, she will be very anxious to find someplace to park nearby so that she can drive herself to school. Um, we, we'd like to solve for that. And so we're, that's not a, that's not
You potentially would add juniors to being able to drive if you have additional parking?
If, if we would look at that as one of the things to offer our family, yes.
And that actually results, the more people driving the campus actually reduces queuing. Because cars don't have to wait to pick up and drop off schools. And the cars are there until they, so they arrive in the morning until they leave. And I think um, for, I, maybe uh, Julia and Chris can, this is Steve, Ben for the record. But I also know having kids go through high school that if, you know, if they're involved in sports or after school activities, buses, busing doesn't really work that well because they're leaving at different times and you need, you know, two or three buses coming at different times to take the kids around. So it's, Julia, you can, maybe you can speak to this for a little.
But so before we go to that, and I don't want to lose the engineer before we get to traffic. Um, this commission to cast man, just from a construction perspective. Again, I presume this is your question. Is there anything unusually complex about this construction? What is the likely length of time for destruction, construction? What is it? And you guys may be familiar from the St. Louis's queuing issues and planning uh, set of things. How are you gonna run this if it's approved? What are the impacts? And is there a summation that you can do on all of those questions?
Um, well, Peter, that, so we lost a pretty picture. But you don't need it for that, this answer. Um, so our construction timeline is about one year. It's about 11 months. Um, again, depending on approvals, funding, lots of things is timing of when this would really start. So there will be a pause uh, over the winter, whether it's because uh, concrete is being poured or whether it's turf being laid. All of those have temperature requirements that aren't uh, aren't conducive in, in Connecticut winters. Um, so those timelines have been built in. The school's prepared to lose the field for a full year. Um, again, it would be based on the timing. If it's a late spring or end of school start or a um, after late fall start of when the uh, trucking for the excavation would be more disruptive or the excavate, the work for pouring the foundations and the slab and things, and the um, post tension construction. Um, those are all two options and it's really working through which is the um, least disruptive to the school's operations during the summer. Um, a lot of that, in like, the school is operational the entire time with camps and things like that. So it's really finding a balance of, of how we um, navigate which one. We know it's gonna be about a year and it's, it's which, which season is gonna be a hit a little harder. Um, so that's what we know for, for the duration. Again, we don't know based on um, approvals, funding, um, that sort of thing about when that would actually start.
In construction complexity?
Um, it's, I mean, I'm the, so we have structural engineers at SMRT that um, will be able to answer this more um, succinctly, but the, the concept is that we're, again, we're not doing a mass excavation and it's more of a targeted um, column approach. Let's drill peers or fresh foundation or red footing, excuse me. So again, it's not a outside the box of um, that it's never been done before, but it's not, you're, it, you're not putting up a Walmart. So it's a little more complex than that. So there's certainly an element to that. That's why we'll make sure we get a, a construction manager on board to coordinate um, all of those things and make sure that we're doing it the most efficient. Um, and it, and cost effective way as well as again, time wise, the, the best way for that.
And, and if you can't answer this question, please tell me. But the cantilevered notion appears to at a minimum put coverage over a wetlands.
It's over reg, the regulated area.
Right. And, and, and my question for you is, are you aware, and this Sarah may be a question that we need to go Kathleen on, but are you aware of any other permit in town that has ever been approved to create a cantilevered space above a wetland?
I.
So I don't, I don't think it's ever been suggested before, but again, it's not over wetlands. It's over the review area. So there's no work in the wetlands for this proposal. It's in the 50 foot review area.
Yeah. And that was one of the first time, and we've had multiple meetings with Kathleen that um, that was the first question. And, and she had a similar option of like, I'm not sure if we've had this before. So it was moving forward.
As long as Kathleen has considered that issue, I'm fine.
Excuse me, Commissioner Turner, I um, think that this needs to be further discussed. It's uh, unique. It's different. Um, you know, the fact that it's over wetlands, it has an impact.
It's over the regulated area. It's over the semi area.
That was, that was much of the discussion um, last night and, and will be reviewed on that.
And again, there's an application before the inland wetlands commission. They have to make a decision before planning and zoning will make any sort of decision. So this will be reviewed in depth by the proper bodies in town.
And since, I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner, I just made. Just in, hopefully away concerns. Uh, I do know for a fact that construction actually on the ground in upland review areas is allowed via inland wetland commission. So I think that greater proof's a lesser. In other words, you can build actually on the upland review area or the buffer area. Certainly having something above it is should be less intrusive and less of a problem. Assuming taking care of all the drainage issues, et cetera. So I hope, hope maybe that helps.
It's, it's Commissioner Turner, I'm, I totally disagree with what you're saying. If we look at uh, the environmental laws from California to other states, um, you cannot build over, cast a shadow into that area. And I, I'm not sure that what you're saying is correct.
Ken, it, um, this is Sarah. What, what um, Attorney Bennett is saying is correct. The inland wetlands agent and the inland wetlands commission does issue permits to construct in the upland review area.
Yeah, they, they have, they have permitted everything from pools to pool houses in the upland review area.
And I mean, it, this is just anecdotal, but like my driveway goes through the upland review area. I got a permit for that, but paved driveway.
I think the issue, this is Commissioner Chris, then the issue is, is there something in the upland review area by its nature that can affect the wetland, then they gotta think about it. But that's for someone else's call.
Correct. That's, that's gonna be.
Their call.
Yeah, that's gonna be the wetlands commission determination.
Trying to stay in my lane here. Um, but uh, just a further question on the, you mentioned funding and so forth. Do you have funding for this already?
Uh, Christopher Russell for the record, um, yes and no. Uh, we have a number of levers that we can pull. Uh, we, we can't, we, we, we've, we've, we've made a very distinct decision to say, we're not gonna go out and try to raise money for this project until it is approved. Because it, it's a new idea and we recognize that we were coming to inland wetlands and planning and zoning with an idea that's new in town. And until it's approved, you know, we, we're not gonna go out and say, we're gonna go build this because that just seems pretty arrogant. So, so the answer is we, we have not raised specific dollars for this. If we were ready to build it, we would figure out a way to build it and raise the money after the.
It, well, if I were ahead of that development committee, I'd be thinking, well, I can't go out and knock on doors with my, and stand there with my tin cup action for money until I know what I'm asking for. So you gotta find out that, yeah, we have our approvals. Here's exactly what we want to do. And we priced it out. So you know what's it's gonna cost. So you know how much to ask for, perhaps a fudge factor because you need a fudge factor. Um, my can, my potential concern is that if something is approved, uh, the funding doesn't quite go as you want. Uh, you end up two years down the road, you're a half a million dollar short and you and construction costs are now up. So now you're maybe more than half a million dollars short. And then you come back and say, well, you know, something didn't work out. We want to change it around to meet the funding we have in the kitty. And then we end up reviewing everything again.
Director Julia gave round the CFO of the school. Every building, I, I've been at the school for 35 years. And I've been co-chair of the building committee and headed of the last, all the building projects for the last 30 years. And we have never put a shovel on the ground without a funding plan in place and cash in place to actually complete. We've never run short on it. So I, I appreciate that. And I'd like to, that's good for us to take back the development committees for sure. But we have, we've been very, very conservative. We have built in escalation costs for all of our construction projects and contingency, uh, healthy contingency with all of our projects. So we've come in on time and under budget for every project for the past 30 years.
Yeah, that's answered. Thank you.
Any more questions uh, at this point?
Keep going.
All right. Uh, Mr. Tarrallo, uh, by the way, just so you know, so uh, just my way of background. In the 2013 approval, which is meaningful here, I'm not sure how many of you were actually on the commission at that time. But um, uh, that traffic study that was used back then was done by Frederick P. Clark, Michael Galante. Ordinarily, we'd be using uh, them, though I think Mike's retired now. Uh, but Michael, I think became your traffic consultant from time to time. So we couldn't use him or his new firm, which is the hardest new firm. Michael actually recommended uh, Marissa Tarrallo to me. And that's why she's, she's here for us tonight. So with that introduction.
Solid introduction. Um, Marissa Tarrallo, uh, ACRF with uh, ACRF for the record. Uh, we do operate out of our C F R D bagged office. Um, I haven't had the opportunity to be in front of you before. So just slight background. As Stephen mentioned, I am a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I am also a professional traffic operations engineer at PTOE nationally. Um, I have been, I primarily do about 85% of my work as municipal traffic work. Uh, this is a unique case. I, Michael and I know each other because I have been reviewing Michael's applications for many years and Michael has therefore reviewed my applications. Um, so I am on call to the city of Norwalk currently, as well as about a dozen municipalities in Westchester. Um, going forward and planning towards more uh, reviewing the traffic studies. So to that point, I have tried to make my presentation fairly short, uh, because I understand if I have questions and I stuck largely to exhibits for you to ask those questions on. Um, if anything pops up, feel free to ask. Um, let me just start from the beginning. So our traffic studies on its basis very simply because it is a very large, robust traffic study that was submitted to you. But at its core, it's, it's meant to do two things. It has two purposes. One is to fulfill the requirements of your 2013 resolution uh, for a traffic study based on current enrollment at the school. The second is to evaluate the traffic improvements being made to the site by doing this elevated field concept. So to start uh, as a priority, it's on the way. Uh, the 2013 planning and zoning resolution. So this was from the November 2012 um, traffic study for F P Clark Associates now, Artistic and Hanover. It was based on an initial enrollment of 531 students. And it required a traffic study for an increase of 53 students. It's been on pause because of the COVID pandemic, which is when this was hit. Um, and we are now, according to Connecticut DOT, um, all the agency factors back to normal traffic operating conditions. And we were at the time of our data collection. Um, the traffic study is included, updated traffic counts in order to evaluate, as you put in the uh, resolution, level of service and delay. Uh, level of service is A through F. Um, I always have to say this. I, I'm sorry. I always have to caveat this. You don't want your child coming home with a C, certainly not from this wonderful institution either. Um, C, A, B, C is a general good operating traffic conditions. D starts to get congested. Obviously you don't want to fail school. You don't want to fail traffic. So the F is, is what it's meant to be. Um, but level of service is a grading scale for traffic. Delay is what, the amount of time you will on average experience doing that maneuver at whatever intersection we're evaluating. Um, the level of service and delay requirements for the resolution are a minimum of 20% improvement from the existing November 2012 uh, condition. So that traffic study had an existing, it had a growth plan, it had additional traffic. Even though that had a build out, um, and a higher level of, level of service, the resolution requirement is to maintain and improve upon the 2012 condition, which at this point is 11 years ago.
Uh, excuse me, excuse me. I'm sorry for interrupting uh, and I truly apologize, but um, can you please talk about your 20% improvement? What is that based on? Um, you know, I, I, I don't understand.
I'm sorry. This is just to introduce your resolution. My next slide will show the improvement and what that means as far as what the resolution was concerned. So I just wanted to make sure um, we had a full summary of what the resolution is requiring this site to me.
So ma'am.
But I, I'm not sure our resolution said that it had to be 20%.
It did, it did.
It did, yeah.
So just ma'am, this, Commissioner Chris, just to be sure I understood. So in 2012 is the baseline for all this. And uh, any increase of students above 53 of that time means you have to do a new traffic study and you have to meet these bogies of level of service and so forth. And so um, the uh, the, the tripwire occurred during uh, COVID when it didn't have any reasonable conditions. You really couldn't test it. Okay, fair enough. Uh, well, now we don't have that issue anymore. We now have normal conditions. Now you have to meet that. And the next slide you're gonna show is the before and after picture.
Yes, the files.
Okay, I got it now.
Absolutely. I apologize. 2012 was a long time ago. So I just want to make sure we summarize it because I also was taking that resolution, having not been your original traffic study engineer and, and reading it and meeting the requirements.
I go next one.
Um, so lastly, the last thing written into your resolution is no additional enrollment until that level of service and delay is back to meeting the required minimum 20% improvement over the 2012 condition. Okay. So the findings of our traffic study, um, and I can pull up the level of service tables. I try not to because it has a lot of numbers in it. But the overall findings that you would have seen in our traffic study report is that all approaches analyzed on either side of the St. Luke's driveway, including the St. Luke's driveway, continue to operate at a level of service A or B with less than 11 seconds of delay, which is very notably low. Um, the northbound St. Luke's driveway, so as seen here, the actual driveway of the site continues to operate at level of service F. This only affects St. Luke's vehicles, vehicles that have come into our site and now need to get out during the weekday AM hour. And it is actually technically a 65% improvement on the delay of level of service F. The previous level of service F was about 585 second delay. Just to be reasonable, that's not what's occurring. What happens with these models when we create them is as you get close to a tipping point, it accelerates the delay and it kind of exponentially increases it. So once we're over capacity, basically the program kind of panics. And as we get further over capacity, I could add two cars, that 585 might turn into 785. So no one was previously experiencing 585 seconds of delay. But that's what the program had documented. The current program is documenting 186 seconds of delay, which is a 65% improvement from the 2012.
I'm, 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 I'm sorry, Commissioner Turner. You, you were stating some facts, but I don't understand. Um, what model are you using when you state these facts?
Yes. So we used um, the same software that was used for the previous traffic study, the software that's approved for all.
I'm, I'm sorry. Who, who did the traffic study?
The 2012 traffic study was done by um, F P Clark, now a part of Artistic and Hanover. They used a program called Synchro Six, version six, Synchro software, uh, which is a traffic modeling software that all traffic consultants use.
No, no, I'm sorry. Not all traffic consultants use. Um, what did you use?
I also used Synchro. Synchro Six is no longer an available version. I am using Synchro Eleven, which is based on an HCM highway capacity methodology of uh, 2000, which is the same as the Synchro Six version. And they're based on highway capacity manual methodology that is a national transportation research board standard.
And how does that relate to New Canaan and our traffic and our issues?
So your resolution at the moment, what we are trying to do is meet the burden of requirement on your resolution. The levels of service, you can set them in your zoning code. You can um, set them by way of precedent on traffic studies that you review. You can make a requirement that once we've exceeded level of service F, you have to mitigate. Um, that's also part of the state's environmental review process. It's also part of um, Connecticut DOT's review process. As far as how we analyze it, uh, as I mentioned, the highway capacity manual is national. And everyone has to follow that letter of law in analyzing or developing a level of service. There are really, I, I don't want to say none, um, but I have been doing this for a, a little over a decade now. And there are very few other approved softwares, none in fact, by Connecticut DOT besides a higher micro simulation modeling software that is still based on HCM. So every modeling software used for agency or municipal review is based on highway capacity manual.
Okay. I, I appreciate everything you're saying. Um, when you say that there's a 65% improvement over the 2012 conditions, um, o- okay, are you comparing what you projected with this new facility? Based on the past? What? I, I, I'm confused.
Think, I think what we need to establish is there was a level of service and delay in the 2012 pri- as part of the 2012 application prior to the construction of the addition in 2012. Then there was an improved, theoretically, an improved level of service and delay
Post the two thousand twelve constru- thirteen construction and what that number is and how much it's improved. And what we're trying to establish now is with the proposed construction. How much better or worse will both of those get with this new project?
So the only.
Thank you.
That was that, um, the build condition of the traffic study, the two thousand twelve study. Actually wasn't an improvement over existing condition. It was mitigating back to no build condition, which is the standard burden of bear of a traffic study. So you do an existing condition and then you do a no build. So when we construct this, it will now be three years later. These additional projects in the area may have added traffic and that's your new baseline. And then you do a build condition that says now we are also adding our traffic, which is let's say twenty. Cars. I know that's not what it is, but let's say it's twenty cars. That's the build condition. The requirement of a traffic study is to take the build and bring it back down to the no build condition and an approved level. So the previous traffic study, that resolution is actually much stricter than what is the normal burden of bear. That it has to come all the way back down to two thousand twelve existing before they did any construction or increase any enrollment.
Right.
Not meet the build condition with two thousand. Yes.
And that's, that's what they were able to do?
Yes, so that's where, and I, I caveated this again with our program because this driveway is over saturated, which we're talking about with the queuing, the vehicles, everyone that's here. It is not a realized sixty-five percent improvement. No one driving down that driveway thinks it's sixty-five percent better than it was. It's that because the traffic has actually reduced in a lot of turning movements, there's some background traffic that's increased slightly. But the overall traffic on the road hasn't materially changed, even with the change in enrollment. The program is just kind of analyzing the slight difference. Um, as a very big improvement. So we are caveating, we don't think people are feeling a sixty-five percent improvement, but we certainly did not deteriorate that driveway.
And, and I appreciate what you're doing and I acknowledge it. But how do you quantify sixty-five percent? I, I'm, I'm sorry, you know. Give me a better idea of, you know, how that was.
Yep, so the program gives a delay of a hundred and eighty-five, a hundred and sixty-five seconds. The previous delay, the program gave, same program. It's five hundred and eighty-five seconds. So I'm strictly saying that it's a sixty-five percent improvement based on the delay alone. Not based on the level of service, because level of service is still F, but I can't materially change the level of service F. Uh, because by a percentage, because it's a letter.
So what you're saying is we have a level of service of F, which is failure, gridlock, and it remains.
But I would note that that level of service F, the only level of service F, everything else is A or B with less than eleven seconds of delay. That level of service F is on Saint Luke's driveway.
And if I, I'm sorry.
Oh, please, Mr. Pen.
Thank you. I, I, I want to emphasize again that this level of service F is for cars exiting. Saint Luke. It's not on North Wilton Road, it's exiting, so it doesn't impact. Traffic on North Wilton Road, but if I understand that correctly. And, and there is another problem. There's the queuing of on North Wilton Road entering into the school, and we'll get to that in a minute.
Okay.
But that's not a level of service. And I also wanted to just say that the condition from the two thousand thirteen says. Twenty cent, twenty percent improvement over the existing condition. For the existing conditions, as Marissa described, was a certain amount of delay, which is a level F. And the improvement has been twenty percent greater, sixty-five percent greater than that existing condition. So. Thank you, Mr. Chris, I'm sorry.
Just be sure I understand. So in other words, the, uh, requirement of a twenty percent improvement over existing conditions, you're asserting that. Is in fact the case today with the sixty-five percent improvement. Is that a correct statement?
Movement, yeah, which is my point with making the mo- the comment before about all the other approaches are A or B with eleven seconds. There's really nothing to improve when you're at eleven seconds. So yes, the one movement that we can change and improve upon, I am asserting that it's twenty percent better. Than it was.
So any, look for a yes or no on this one, if I may. So the requirement under the twenty twelve. Um, special permit was that there needed to be a twenty percent improvement. And your analysis based on very recent, recently, a month or so ago. Is that, that, uh, it is improved, that that bogey has been met. Yes, okay. When I, when I see all approaches, what I think in my naive mind is someone driving in from Wilton Road and not queuing up on Wilton Road. I guess I'm misinterpreting that statement, so help me out here.
Well, so you're talking about how is the queuing.
That's what I'm reading there and that's.
Right, okay, that's, and that's very fair. So the burden again on the resolution doesn't mention queuing. And queuing is a little bit more nuanced than level of service and delay. Both of the level of service and delay conditions like E V are over an hour. Queuing particularly for schools or anything that has a very fast dismissal, like an event of any kind. Is usually very bad for a very short period of time, fifteen, ten, fifteen, twenty minutes. If it is that short of a queue, which it is in this particular case, otherwise the volumes would show otherwise. Um, and we have two days of observations for that. Uh, when you have something that's only ten or fifteen minutes and then you put it into a model that's averaging it over an hour. It's gonna be like, all right, in that moment, the level of service is probably like really close to D. But because I'm trying to come up with a level of service over an hour, which is the standard, I'm gonna give it a level of service B. So that's where our first half of our study is just to point out to you that based on the resolution, we want to make sure that we first check the box. That we meet the level of service and delay requirement. There is, and if I, if I may go to the queuing, there is a very, um. You know, very clear issue with queuing. It was very detailedly outlined in our memorandum. We did two days of data collection. We counted all of the cars queued on North Wilton Road. It is not risen to the level of effect in the resolution, the way the resolution was written. However, Saint Luke's clearly recognizes the problem as we are trying to figure out how to queue onsite.
I'll, I'll, I'll go on the record saying I don't like the queuing in Wilton. I don't like it in part of West School either, and I can name a few other places because. At least on West School, Hornet's Ridge is sort of, kind of, sort of flat, so you can go on the wrong side of the road without probably running into somebody. North Wilton Road with the hills and curves, not a good idea. And. Be stuck behind a bunch of cars waiting for it to clear is not a fun thing. I would also notice that many of them idle, which you're not supposed to do anyway, so I'll just put that in the record too, so I'll be quiet now.
No, and, and we, we documented fifty-eight car spillback from North Wilton Road. So we're not, it, it's very clearly outlined in our memorandum. There's a period of time we actually show the escalation of the queue and how it comes back down in a graphic format. To show when we were spilling outside of the site and when we were staying in the site. That was all used to analyze. How the corral system might work, how big the corral system needed to be, how could we use the parking lot for a variety of ways to make sure that the queuing was solved, because if. You're gonna have all this construction, if you're gonna have all of this activity, let's make it a very large improvement on the traffic condition as it stands today. Um, so the new elevated field has allowance for two hundred parking spaces beneath it. Um, less thirty-six spaces, but we have to take right from the corral. Less eighty spaces reallocated from the tennis court. It's a net increase of eighty-four parking spaces. So, um, your comment before of what, kind of like, what are we trying to do with it? We're doing both things with it.
Excuse me, how many spaces, Commissioner Chris, are? How many other spaces are on the pro- on the campus now, besides, you get the eighty-four new ones? How many others could be there total?
Correct, one sixty-seven.
Proper state, proper spaces, so one, one sixty-seven plus eighty-four would be the new number.
Yes, the new available parking lot.
Got it. And sixty-seven minus forty-five. So it's one twenty-two.
And, and I, I, I'll point out at this moment that, that there is a shortfall of parking, uh, uh. For many, many reasons, including there's not any visitor parking, admissions, people come to interview students, parking is very problematic for them. Parent teacher, uh, conferences, there's just not enough parking, uh, on campus. And as Mr. Ross has said earlier. You know, many schools in our area allow juniors to drive to school. Saint Luke's can't allow that. Um, so. Uh, there is a parking shortage at Saint Luke's.
That, um. Out parcel lot, what do you call it? The current queuing, where the queuing is proposed, what do you call that lot right now?
Our, our athletics center lot, the pickup corral lot.
The corral lot, right. Um, do you currently use that in a queuing solution in the mornings?
Yeah.
Or reunions? No? It's strictly parking?
Yes.
Okay.
So it, it's twofold solution. This is looking ideal, uh, solution on my mindset because. Um, we are adding a net increase in parking spaces that is allowing for more cars to stay on campus. We always love for cars to stay on campus from a traffic perspective because we took. Of the four trips that needed to go in and out of that site during the day, we just cut it in cap. So we don't necessarily want to, you know, have a four hundred people on the cars, but we have a nice balance that we're. Addressing our full shortfall and then also solving a future problem by making sure we keep more of the cars onsite. So. All of our analysis is based on not having that additional car stay onsite. Nothing I did. Assumed car stayed onsite from a conservative point. So I am first and foremost trying to make sure that regardless of what is done with that parking. And who can park there, that you can still queue every single car as if it's coming today. But everything I did is therefore conservative if they were to allow cars to stay onsite for juniors or whatever they choose to do with this parking. So here is the queue on North Wilton Road. That, you said you sat in. I don't know anyone, by the way, that enjoys sitting in a queue. Like, I don't know anyone that thinks that that's a joyful day. Um, so I will note, we did have some observation in that corral space. It's not. Used specifically as a corral or as a queuing space right now, but when you have no place to go, you end up on a tennis court. So similarly, when we have no place to go. Um, the drive aisle of the staff lot, we got a maximum amount of cars to sit queued on this site today of sixty. Vehicles, sixty passenger vehicles, cars, and then six, the six buses that currently serve the school. That was all queued at one time and we still had approximately a fifty-eight car backup of cars queuing to get into. The site on the two days we looked at it in early March when school was in full session and we had. We just missed the snowstorm, by the way. This is a couple of days after the snowstorm. Um, we had a fifty-eight car backup. The maximum queue we observed is a hundred and eighteen vehicles. We will provide with the remaining, so all of this drive space minus the fifteen spaces that you're seeing in that dashed red, that would be the staff lot. All of the remaining queuing states, that drive aisle is still as long as it is today. So there's still forty-five cars in the worst case that could queue all the way up from the driveway. You have an additional forty-five in that corral, which is ninety. And then for that a hundred and eighteen condition. You also have all of the additional queuing space that can be made out of this parking lot. So in total, if you wanted to just use those drive aisles, very common outside of a lot of the public schools we work in. Um, you know, you've got parking right up against the curves, the teachers can walk into school, but the car, cars come in to pick up, just block every one of those teachers in. Um, you could queue over fifty vehicles in that, for, in that parking garage while having all those cars parked. Without having to tell people you can't park here, so we can use it as a corral. So that in total would leave the site with a hundred and forty vehicles being able to queue onsite. That's assuming that we still have the need for an a hundred and eighteen car queue if juniors or other people stay onsite. So there is some built-in additional flexibility, and that was just me quickly adding up what the aisles could do. I am certain you can fit more than fifty cars comfortably queuing there. Um, but, but softly, conservatively, when you have a couple, quick twenty cars spillback. What are you gonna do? You're gonna put them in this parking garage and they have that flexibility to do that.
So the initial plan is not to have the cars queue in the parking garage. So that's kind of like.
Yes.
Because I, I was thinking like there's gonna be conflicts between people wanting to get in their car and leave, and then there's cars queuing, okay.
Yeah, and how you would, I mean, again, like, depending on how they have to use it, they've been very flexible, for instance, with the tennis courts. You could make it so staff is largely in there and students are in the other portion of the lot. Or visitors, and then they, the staff tends to be there later than the students. Students that have after school, it could be strategically put into the parking lot. So there's a little bit of. Flexibility and nuance in it, but even without that fifty spaces. We're still ninety cars queued when there's currently a hundred and eighteen car queue at its maximum. If we even just park twenty more of those vehicles onsite, we've resolved that queue.
So, this, Commissioner Chris, so what I'm hearing is that given driveways and the new corral and other spaces. Non-tennis court spaces, um, the, all the folks who are idling and waiting on North Wilton Road will be idling in. Let's hope they don't idle, but they'll be waiting in the campus someplace. So it's a you problem as opposed to the public street problem.
Exactly.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, yes, you want to address the no idling on campus.
Yes, thank you.
It's the state law, you know. I just say.
We, while we can't technically enforce no idling on North Wilton Road, we can enforce it on our campus and we do have a no idling policy already in place on.
Doesn't force?
It's enforced, yes, by.
Do people obey? I don't know.
They do when I knock on their windows and introduce myself, yes, they do.
Okay.
That's just, you mentioned queuing in a hundred and, a hundred plus, and then. The, I think it's helpful to kind of understand the different denominators, numerators that we're talking about here. So, uh, it was helpful to hear about the spaces and the total bear. So it's, it's about six hundred students plus or minus, as I understand, but. Probably five to one ratio of students to staff, I would think. So you're another hundred and twenty-five plus people, so you're seven hundred and twenty-five. Potential individual families attending the school every day. So, um, and I'm sure you've done studies as to how many take the bus, how many. You know. Is this assuming everyone arrives at the same time? Because I know the public schools also sta- stagger their starts, so. Um, can you just help us understand is, is the queuing scenario they're describing, all the grades, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm quite familiar with which. Grades start at what time? So is that a factor in your analysis too? Because I imagine. If they, if everyone started same exact day or same exact time, that would affect the queuing.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that, Julie Gabriel, for the record. We have a staggered schedule. The morning issue is, it's, it's not a morning issue. Uh, because we have a nine o'clock start, we often have extra help before school. We have meetings before school, so it's sort of naturally staggers itself. It's the afternoon pickups, which we do have a staggered afternoon pickup. Uh, middle school gets out twenty-five minutes earlier than our upper school. So that helps stagger it. We also have after-school activities. The biggest issue is when we have a short and, uh, an emergency dismissal for weather. Or if you have a half day because it's a holiday weekend. Um, it's that one time when everybody is coming to the campus. It doesn't happen often, but it does happen. Where all population is arriving at campus. We try and stagger it even then. Um, the biggest issue that we have are parents coming early for pickup. So if you have a three o'clock dismissal, we often have parents showing up at two thirty. And because they are coming up, they will park on campus and fog up the whole entranceway so that. Be able to put them into a queue area where if they get there early, they're going to sit off and, and keep the main, uh, driveway open. That's what this would really allow for. The biggest problem is when it's an early dismissal or a half day or something like that, but we do stagger our afternoon. Uh, there are, you know, we have a couple of weeks during the year where our after-school activities in between season. So right before Thanksgiving, for example, before we've started our winter of school, all of our stu- all of our students have to do an after-school activity. So there is those, uh, periods of time in between where, where there are no after-school activities. That can create some, uh, certainly some. Um, crowds coming in at that same time, congestion.
Okay, super helpful. So it, it doesn't want to hear, I'm just trying to figure out, are the queues in the morning, are the queues in the afternoon? So it sounds like they're different things.
Yeah, so getting inside after, I would say, and then just to add, our traffic study was conservative and not. Um, needing to create further splits or anything else, like any further adjustment the site makes or any of those elements are not part of this. So we didn't do a staggered, we did it as staggered as it is today, observation of queues. So we're not saying we'll be able to reduce to this if we also do X, X, and X. We're trying to make it so we can accommodate with the operations today. Um, which again will continue to give flexibility if that ever needs to be changed or modified. Um, the other thing I would just quickly mention is, I said we had done observations on two days for the queue. One of the days we did a queue observation was considered our worst case scenario. That's a day that there was a basketball game going on. There was actually busing of other students onto campus and additional buses. The bus is approximately forty feet, so it's twice the size of a passenger car. When I gave you the lengths of how many cars we can fit, it's based on a twenty car, twenty foot car, that's a pretty old number. Very few cars are still twenty feet. But we do it at twenty feet, um, but the buses were queued more to drop off and pick up for that basketball event. And so the max queue I'm giving you is actually based on some of that after-school activity needing to happen, um, some recent weather. Uh, which was making it a little bit more difficult to drive. We really tried to capture as close as we could, the worst case, to make sure we designed the corral system. To accommodate as close to, for instance, the a hundred year flood in fossil.
Your, um, calculations on level of service and delay for the proposed, um, design. Did that take into account only the corral queuing or what you were describing as the internal garage queuing as well? Because. I personally, I don't see how that garage queuing could work. You know, as soon as you have. Two people trying to get in or out of the garage with a queue in place, it's gets, it's gonna.
You effectively tell them they can't get out. They can't get out until the dismissal has happened. That's what you have to do. Um, and you either put staff there who know that they have to leave fifteen minutes after dismissal. It has to be pretty well coordinated and that's similar to. How they have to decide when to open the tennis courts and whatnot too. Julie is very hands-on dealing with that in the mornings, which we got to observe, but. Um, from your question about level of service though, um, to clarify, we only can evaluate the level of service at intersections. So the level of service for the resolution is based on the site driveway at North Wilton Road. These are not based on a level of service. Um, just, that's not how you kind of, how you queuing, it's a little bit more nuanced. You can kind of simulate it, you kind of evaluate again. More just like a function of how can people move, and that's why I did it for this purpose on a very simplistic like space di- And that's why I did it for this purpose on a very simplistic like space diagram. Everybody was just fully parked. How would I handle it? So the level of service that you saw before is stops at the driveway of St. Luke's in North Wilton.
This Commissioner Chris, the question revealed my ignorance. When people are leaving the campus, so there's a stop sign at the end of the driveway, okay. Do you have like a traffic warden there for peak times?
We, Julie Gabriel, we.
You know, some places do like Grace Farm has.
We will hire police on certain days. So often, for example, the first week of school when people, we have a lot of new parents and they aren't familiar with the pickup and drop-off routines. We'll actually contract the mechanic police to be there. We'll try and do that again on those half-days. Or if there's, you know, an event that we know, we will contact the police. It's, it's been tough sometimes to actually be able to get police to, to do those extra hours. So we, we don't have a standing, we don't have a traffic warning. Warden, we, we outsource our facilities to Sedexo and they're not permitted to put somebody, they have, they are doing traffic duty on campus. But their company will not allow them to go into the road for insurance purposes. So it's really just the police that we're able to use.
Thank you.
Exiting, it takes a while and that's why we have like the notable level service at noon AM. But the one benefit to cars exiting in the morning is the cars that are trying to come in in the morning that are also St. Luke's parents that are waving each other out. So when you actually observe it, it flows. Like no matter what, if a lot of cars come at one time, there's a large queue on St. Luke's campus. But I think that flow is helped by most of the people on that road in that morning, besides people that are just trying to get through are St. Luke's parents kind of coming and going. So there is a lot of flagging going on. It's quite well civilized for a driveway that I've had to observe. The queue is a waiting queue and there's hopping. But at this point, I think residents are also aware of the queue. They would like to see it go away, but they're aware enough of it that it's, it's a pretty civilized driving environment. And that's also represented in our crash analysis, by the way, that is included in our traffic study. But there is an increase in crashes along any of this section of road.
This Commissioner Chris, for the question on the underground parking structure. So you're storing cars there, waiting to get out as a, as an overflow. Many of them may not be nice and maybe running their ice car engines. I'm wondering, what kind of ventilation do you have in there to deal with that sort of thing? Or do you need? Open, is it, et cetera?
Uh, this is Melissa Flynn with S M R T. So it's an open parking garage. So they, there's a code requirement that at least twenty percent is open. I think ours is closer to sixty or forty percent. So there's no mechanical ventilation required because we are open on those three sides of. Most of the side on this side of the camp, of the hill. And then the three other sides are completely are open from three feet to the seven feet above.
And that's seem to be adequate for appropriate ventilation.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
It's, it's Commissioner Turner. Following on the comments about ventilation. Yeah, you know, you, you conform to code. You are open to four sides. And it satisfies the code. However, there are environmental conditions that happen that don't allow natural ventilation to be adequate. And I'll go a little further as far as the rounds, the, as far as the egress. I believe by code, you're required to have one means of egress you're providing to. I would only suggest that you might suggest, might consider an additional means of egress. And what I'm getting at is that the building code is very minimal. And it doesn't necessarily address certain conditions. And I think that, you know, you're providing a environment where you've got automobiles, you've got potential, you know, automobiles, you know, e, e, environmental conditions that could create conditions that the building code doesn't anticipate. And I think you need to look at that a little closer. And, you know, maybe you need another means of egress to get people off the playing field in a safe way. Or something happened in the parking garage. And you're, you're relying on an environmentally ventilated condition. It doesn't, doesn't always work and the codes don't respond to that. And I'm just suggesting that you need to look a little deeper and think about protecting your children and your people that are on this deck. And they get out there, you know, you've got stairs that are not protected. What, what happens when it snows and there's ice? You know, there's a lot of things that you could do much better. And I just suggest that you consider this.
Maybe you could give us an overall plan of the, of the lower level and just show, or even upper level. Just show us the egress points from the upper deck.
Sure, like computer guide, so take one second while I put it back on, but.
Yeah, do you? Yeah.
Commissioner Bennett here, just on that earlier point. I mean, I think the ventilation may be fine if there are parked cars coming and going, but if you use it as a staging area and people will be idling. To know what that's gonna do to the ventilation.
Good point.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Julie Gabriel, for the record. Again, I, we don't anticipate we'll use it for the extra staging. You can imagine if there was a time that we needed to, it would not be in the normal course of business. We would normally just be using that corral area. But I can imagine, we're saying as a backup, that I, I wouldn't say we wouldn't use it for sure. We have a no idling policy on campus, which we enforce. So if we do have people waiting in there and parking, I would just assign folks down there, probably including myself, to enforce that. So we would have no idling in that parking lot.
I'm, I'm sorry, it's Commissioner Turner. I thank you for what you're saying. How do you enforce non, non-idling? People do it.
I appreciate that. Yes, thank you. I, I do. I knock on the windows and say, please turn the car off. So that does happen on a regular basis on our campus.
So you walk around and knock on the car doors and tell them, shut it off?
I do.
Yeah, okay. Good for you.
Steve Finn, for the record, I, I think I learned yesterday in our presentation before the Inland Wetlands Commission. I think it was Christopher Ross out who explained that generally the way the queuing works is the cars are stopped, they're turned off. And then when the dismissal happens, you turn the car on and the, and the queue moves fairly quickly. So if the queue was in the garage on the rare page that it would, it's not like there are a bunch of cars idling in there for fifteen or twenty minutes. They're turned off, dismissal happens, the queue starts to move, car gets turned on. So the amount of idling time in the queue is, is fairly restricted.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mister, Mister, Mister Finn. How do you know that? Is that your opinion or is that based on any kind of fact?
That is the, thank you, Mr. Turner. That, that is based on how Mr. Rossau described the process to the Inland Wetlands Commission. I have not been there during, well, if I've been there during the queuing, it's only been once. I have to rely on the statements of people who are there. And as Mr. Ross will explain, just as in a ferry, if you're waiting to get on a ferry. You're, you're, you park with your car, well, ferry comes, turn your car on, you drive on. And then, you know, so it makes sense to me. You know, again, I'm not there, but it makes, it makes perfect sense to me.
I'm, I'm sorry, Attorney Flynn. Finn, I don't buy it. Thank you.
I have a piece that I think would be helpful or just, just that we do air quality emissions analysis of state, of mobile and stationary sources both. On its concept level, and we did do our observations, we did notice the cars were turning off. I said it like this, I don't want my car running because I don't want to smell it. That's beside the point because I understand that's a point of an opinion. And I, and I respectfully understand that point of view. What I will say is that since the school has a no idling policy and we know for certain that no one on North Wilton Road is turning their car off today to wait in that queue, that fifty-eight cars that are sitting on North Wilton Road idling today will be on-site with the opportunity for someone to knock on their window and not idle anymore. So no matter what, we will be improving on today's condition because they will not be on North Wilton Road idling, which we know for certain. There is no one, in my observation going down that road, no one is shutting their car off waiting in that queue. It's just dangerous to have your car off. So that we.
So, so you would be open to a condition that somebody is gonna knock on everybody's window and tell them to shut off their engine? And every, everybody's gonna cooperate? Is that what you're saying?
I'm personally not. I, for, for the record, for St. Luke's, we would, we, we have a no idling policy, which we enforce. And we would expect to continue enforcing it. I would say anecdotally, I've had to knock on fewer windows because so many of the new cars that are arriving on campus have the automatic turn-off idling feature these days. So that when you're sitting there waiting, the car shuts off. And when you hit the gas, it then turns back on. So that's happening more and more. We're also having many more electric cars showing up on our campus. So the, the idling is less of an issue than it has been, one, even two, five years ago, seven, eight years ago. When we actually introduced it as a policy, when I worked with the Environmental Club to introduce it as a policy, because I was the advisor to the Environmental Club.
Mr. Chairman, I have two questions. One's a public safety issue that hasn't been touched on yet. Mister Finn, I'll direct it towards you. Assuming an ambulance has to go into the parking garage, like in New Canaan, which is very large vehicle. But you discussed the ability of that vehicle to safely ingress, egress and make any or all turns. Assuming every space there has a car in it.
It cannot. The garage has a height limitation.
So I'm wondering, for example, let's say there's someone who's, fair enough, I'm wondering if there's a, you know, someone who's injured and really can't be physically moved easily out of the garage. It may be a danger to do that, whether it might be easier. Yep. So in other words, if someone is incapacitated within the garage, the person would probably have to be lifted out of there and removed from the garage and then placed in an ambulance. An ambulance cannot get in the garage that way, I'm here. I'm sure the physical issues.
Melissa Flynn, the clearance is seven foot six, which is standard clearance type for, for most garages. So an ambulance would not fit. So you're correct. But it would be as same as if someone had a, a medical emergency in the building and they had to transfer outside the building. And so, so I got my computer running and I could share our, one of our architectural plans that shows that the egress at the, so this is she, I think, A. A one oh one. So this is the parking level and the, the three blue triangles are the means of egress. So we have, we actually do have three means of egress. Two are obviously the vehicle entrances and they will, there's a separate sidewalk exit. So there's like a man door essentially on each one of those. And then to the south side, there is a stair that goes up to the upper field as well as out to the practice area. So we have three pedestrian means of egress at the parking level. And then at the, the field level, we also have two means of egress. One from the ramp, which is ADA up to the, the grandstand area. And similarly, we have a second means of egress to the stair, which obviously is not ADA. And then one of the other options that we looked at for, in discussion, discussing with the, the fire marshal. Cause this was, it was one of the major concerns that he had. And the number of occupancy and the use and kind of where that number was capped at. So the two means of egress has one limit. And so we had looked at if the school wished to put us at the second stair, they could increase that occupancy at that at the other entrance.
That's, to Chair Radman, but given the current proposed occupancy for the field, based on this drawing, the two means of e, well, three, I guess. One leads to a ramp and two are, one is, one is to a stair, two are to the stair and one is to a ramp. Is that right?
Correct.
And that is code compliant in terms of capacity?
Well, yeah, one is required ADA accessible and then a second, it does not need to be ADA accessible.
Okay, so two are. If I could further.
It's Commissioner, Commissioner Turner. The code is very clear about providing protective means of egress. You, yes, you, you have two and you could perhaps say three. The problem is that they're not protected. You've got a stair, you've got a ramp, a stair, a stair, ramp. It, it's, you know, what, what happens when there's snow? Who maintains it? Is it really a means of egress? I mean, the code really says that you have to protect it, which means that there has to be some kind of overhang. So that snow, rain, ice doesn't create an issue. I just bring this up as a simple code compliant issue that you need to look into.
If I may, Christopher Ross, for the record, St. Luke's. Obviously, these plans are reviewed with the fire marshal, with the building department and so forth. And moreover, we're a school. We have children on campus and their safety is, is a paramount concern to us. And, and some of the conditions that are hypothesized here really are not practical conditions. We, we don't play athletic events when the field is covered with snow. So we don't have to worry about egressing from a snow-covered stair or from a snow-covered field. These, a field is generally used in dry conditions for athletic events. If you have some rain, you know, during a football or lacrosse game, you can certainly exit down a staircase or down a ramp or, or up to the grandstand. So, so from a practical nature, you know, covering stairs to, to, for, for snow-covered egress, we're not using the field when, when it's covered.
Commissioner, again, if, if I could go back to the picture of the, the other one of the garage. Question, you said two exits. Is one way in, one way out or could be dual?
They're both two-way access points. We're planning on this lower access to be the main entrance that everyone's gonna go in and out of. This western, westerly exit goes into the maintenance yard. And this is, will be gated just to get to control access to have it, everyone funnel through that. This exit that's closer to the AC.
So the, one of the lower end of this picture will be a two-way and that's going to be the principal ingress and egress to the structure is what you're anticipating. Also, you mentioned, sir, a number of, as you meant, a number of electric cars. Are you anticipating charge stations within this facility? And if so, how many and what type?
We are not, Christopher Ross, again, for the record, we are not anticipating car charging stations. Zero underneath the elevated field. It's, it's not a commercial parking lot. It's a private lot. And it's a, it's a school use, so we're not, we're not offering that as a, as a sort of a free to charge a car when you're on.
But you can charge people. Making a moneymaker. Just saying, but you're not gonna happen.
We're not planning on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Commissioners, any other questions?
Oh, I had a question. What, so I know, we talked a little bit about the construction plan for this. In the past, when I've been on this commission and you guys, I think we may be doing the upper field, you are using Soundview Lane as a construction access or maybe backup construction access. I don't remember. How will this be accessed and is Soundview Lane involved or is it all coming off of North, North Wilton Road in terms of construction?
I can answer that. Christopher Ross, for the record, so we have, we have reserved the right to use Soundview Lane. We used it once or twice during the construction of the Arts and Manage Wing in twenty seventeen for, for some, some items that had to come in from that direction. But primary access was through North Wilton Road. For this project, primary access would be through North Wilton Road. We did not anticipate using Soundview Lane at this time.
This Commissioner Chris, looking at the, the campus, it seems. This Commissioner Chris, and loo- looking at the, the campus, it seems like you're boxed in. Uh, basically anything that's buildable, you have something on and a reasonable percentage of your campus is not, uh. Usable because of wetlands. So, uh, you basically used every square inch you can, which is why you're going vertical and up and down. Um, you did mention you have some houses nearby adjacent. Now, if you were to expand your campus, then it becomes institutional use in a residential area. And your grandfathering kind of goes away and you gotta go through all the stuff you gotta go through with that. Uh, could you talk about, you know, have you thought about maybe not doing it this way and doing it and building it in your adjacent areas? Where you have land?
Sure, Christopher.
Think the thought process on why this versus something else?
And it's an excellent question. I, I've spent probably the last six years asking that question over and over. That question came up last night with, with, in the levels. And, you know, what are the alternatives? What else could you do instead of this? Um, I, I can say certainly that using, um, you, doing something on the properties that we acquired. For investment purposes on Deep Valley has never been considered for something to solve for this. Because we recognize the very constraints that you just mentioned, that it's a residential zone, we would have to do, change the use of that zone, we would, it, it, it. It, it's not something that we've contemplated at this time. Uh, on campus, though, we have a forty-five acre campus. If you include the Soundview, uh, sort of Panax Lot, which is a taxable lot. Taxable St. Luke's Foundation lot, but it was combined for purposes of coverage to, to build the last, uh, the twenty seventeen addition. So on that forty-five acres, we've looked at, for example, you know, we talk about parking cars in the tennis courts where we have eighty cars parked roughly. Well, well, why don't we just use that as parking and leave the field at the existing level and build the tennis court someplace else? But we're sort of then just, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul in that, in that state because we're just moving the use someplace else. We would then be grading and clear cutting and doing drainage and so forth. Someplace else on campus to build by tennis courts. You know, maybe down by North Wilton Road, by the, the old A-horn House, which we call the Gray House, which is near the entrance to our campus. Um, and, and that doesn't look like a feasible, all, it, it, sure, it's feasible, but is that the right use of the space? The reason we like this plan is because we leave the tennis courts intact. We can now use them year-round for tennis. We're not parking cars on them. We're not spending twenty-five thousand dollars a year to resurface them every spring for tennis. They stay as tennis courts, they could use for a fall tennis program or with summer tennis program. They could be used for middle school recess, play basketball during COVID, we have giant games of Connect Four and so forth, so the kids can use that. So we can use that space for what it's intended to be as recreation and meanwhile take the existing field and double its use. So that idea of doubling use is what we really find attractive about this. Uh, and then, and the, the, again, the eureka moment is it gives us enough parking to convert that existing lot to this corral. Which, as Marissa said earlier, does solve for the traffic backups. It gives us that optionality to control that on our campus. So it's a really, it's a free-for-one solution, which doing it someplace else on campus does not offer.
Thank you.
Commissioners, anything further?
Yes, Commissioner Turner, um, I just want to say that I think that the, uh. Proposed use of this site makes a lot of sense. Um, it minimizes the footprint, it creates the environment that the school needs. Um, it minimizes the environmental impact. Um, I think it's a very good solution. I have a few concerns that we need to address. I think that lighting is huge. Um, I, I, I know that there's been a photometric. Plan that has been done that shows the lighting within the garage, but it doesn't address the automobiles. And the pollution that they create. Um, I haven't seen anything that. Um, makes me feel comfortable as far as the impact to the neighbors. Um, is there a lighting impact? Is there a sound impact? Is there en- environmental impact? I don't think these have been addressed yet. Um, I think that, um. Uh, you know, simple issues like, um, fire, egress, I mean. Um, you know, we're talking about a lot of e-vehicles, um. Should they suddenly explode? You know, how do we fight a fire? In this garage? I don't, I don't see the egress. I don't understand how that happens. It's. Um, basically designed as a natural ventilation. So that we rely on nature that is gonna blow the pollutants out of the garage. Um, I, I'm concerned about, you know, the students that are playing above this. You know, are they exposed to this? Um, I, I, we haven't seen or understood any kind of environmental impact. To the health and welfare and the safety of the people that are gonna use this facility. And I think that, um, it's a great idea, but I think there's more study that needs to be done. And, um, safeguard for the future and, uh, and the protection of the people that are gonna use this. Um, by code, there are two means of egress. And yes, you satisfy the code, but maybe you should go beyond that and have another means of egress. God forbid, something might happen below. And, you know, what are you doing to pre- prevent? The light, the glare, the, you know, the automobile traffic with their headlights. Um, on the neighbors. Nobody has discussed that. And I just think that. You know, further study needs to be done so that we can answer these questions, so that we can approve this application. Thanks.
Thank you. Since Chairman, I have one comment, it's on, um, proposed regular prayer amendment, the language. Um, I'm, it, it's written so that it certainly applies to you, though it's generic enough it could apply to others, but I'm always a bit wary of. Very, very special language. I'll say that, um, for a particular application, but if I look at this. Um, my initial take is that it's, uh, well-written and I don't see any particular challenges with it. It also mentions single-level parking as opposed to five levels of parking with something above. That's a whole different kind of deal, in my, my opinion. This is single level, so it, the, by its nature, the, the height will mitigate impact, not maybe eliminate, but sort of, um. Attenuated. So my own sense, uh, since as a condition present, approving, approving anything, this has to go through, otherwise you can't do it, do it at all. Uh, my, my sense is that this is, um. Uh, well-written and, uh, it's not too restrictive. And I, I'm trying to think of someone might using this, might be using this language to try to do something that could create a challenge. I, I'm not seeing it, so I would welcome comments from my fellow commissioners, but it seems okay to me, is my take on this. We haven't discussed that at all as part of this application. So I just want to share my thoughts.
Right, well, I appreciate those comments very much. I mean, uh, you know, the. The presentation was gonna come back to me actually to talk specifically about the text change. Now, we've been here quite a while and frankly, most of my remarks are set forth in the application I submitted. I'm happy to go through this. I've added a few rationales for why I think this text change is known, it is good for the king. And, uh, I really think it, it, it is, and I'm happy to lay that out for the commission now. Uh, if some of you have the opportunity, like Mr. Chris, to really go down on it, um, I don't want to waste people's time.
Sam, and if you sleep in Gus's room too.
That was not committed. The, the, the only possible.
Good to know.
In the weeds comments, and to, 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 we get in the weeds real easily, is single level means what in height? Should there be a, a, a limit on height here stated somehow, so that it doesn't become some outsized wrong? But I feel that you could say that, but since, um, this could only be done through special permit. Uh, we can simply say we don't like it for reasons A, B, and C and reject it. But you can't do this as a right. That's my take on it. So it seems reasonable to me on first flush.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do think that this, this is beneficial to the environment. And, you know, the typical things about coverage that we worry about generally are, you know, bulk. Uh, mass, uh, creation of additional impervious surface, uh, impact on neighbors. I don't think any of the general rationales for restricting coverage apply to this particular project. It's located at, well, we don't have a, it's located basically in this, almost in the center of campus, but in the lowest part of the campus. It's eight hundred feet from North Wilton Road. It's hundreds of feet away from neighbors. You've got expansive wetlands with trees in it. Now, granted, we may be cutting down some of those for the county leader, we're gonna get back to you on that. But in general, there's a robust, um, buffer, uh, between, uh, this area of campus and neighborhood. It's blocked on one side by the, the slope of the, uh, of the grandstand and where the athletic facility is. Um, by not building a surface parking lot, you are creating less impervious surface. And, uh, Commissioner, uh, Turner talked about light pollution. Well, one of the impacts of a surface parking lot on a sunny day, driving by in a residential area. Is tremendous bounce and reflection of light. You know, I find it very unpleasant, frankly. And not particularly, uh, uh, bucolic feeling. When you put these cars underneath, you, you, you eliminate that. In addition, as I, we understood from Bill Kenny or Wetland Sciences, because we are. Because cars drip oil, drip antifreeze, when they're not exposed to rain and water. There, there's less of a chance of a wash-off. If there happens to be some in the garage, we've got the protections, the, uh, retain, the retention devices. The cleansing aspects of it, I'm not even gonna lie, turn to take care of that. If cars are idling, uh, out on North Wilton Road waiting to get in, and it's raining, or even if it's not raining, and they're dripping. Oil, antifreeze onto the road, where's that going? It, you know, so this is a, a, a really elegant solution to a, a lot of issues. Um, and, you know, I'm, I, I can go through this in more detail. Perhaps, you know, there'll be opportunity, you know, if the neighbors address this, I can come back to this. I'm not inclined to go through this in, in any more detail unless, uh, officials really want that at this point in time. Seems to me that tension is starting to flag a little bit.
One comment, if I may, uh, the only addition I could make on this, which occurred to me at your commentary. At the end to say surrounding topography, topography means hills, essentially in my mind, or something like that. Say, to, topography, uh, and or vegetation, simply that often we ask for screening and so forth. So that could be a solution in a set of circumstances by having it written in, it would give us that flexibility.
Well, I was, I was actually gonna go to that because, this is, um, Chairman Radman, the, the, the line is that the. Visual impact is mitigated by the site design. So I understand the intent here on the design in terms of structurally, uh. Least invasive and most conducive to the slope of the site and everything else. But what has actually been done in terms of site design to reduce the visual impact?
Well, that's, again, the text change was written as, um, not to apply justice to St. Luke's.
No, I understand. So I'm asking, on this application, what specifically in the site design has been, has been. Developed to mitigate the visual impact of it? And I'm thinking the west elevation and the southwest elevation. Cause quite frankly, from the north, it's looking at your parking lot and from the east, it's the bleachers. So what's, what's designed into this package to reduce the, because, because again, we're talking about. Um, uh, a, a curb condition of a structure, a spandrel beam that's ten feet above that. Fencing, padding, netting, everything that's, I think you said it was twenty-six feet total ballpark. Uh, twenty-six feet total above the existing elevation of the, of the ground, of the field right now. That's, that topography drops down towards the stream or whatever, down in the wetlands, and then it rises back up on the. The North Wilton roadside where the neighbors are. They're gonna be looking at that. Granted, during, there's a lot of trees and a lot of vegetation there, so. For seven to eight months out of the year, you're not gonna see a thing. But in those four or five months out of the year now. You will see stuff through those woods, I think. Um, and that's where I think it's really important that we get some sort of visual representation. I'm not sure how you accomplish it. You're gonna have to have additional conversations with the neighbors, whether it's with Hank or one of the other neighbors of. Taking an in situ photo and doing some Photoshop and showing us what those elevations will look like. Cause those are important elevations to understand what that visual impact is gonna be.
One other, this Commissioner Chris, one thing I have seen in some parking garages is you have. There's your window boxes on the side with hanging gardens where they have vines and so forth that, um, take the edge off. Uh, and they can be nice looking, uh, and reasonably easy to maintain. But, um, anyway, I've seen it, they seem to work well, in my humble opinion, um, something to think about.
It's, um, Commissioner Turner, to add on to that, um, every car. At night has headlights. They have an impact on something, and I think that has to be rolled into this discussion.
Uh, could I ask a question? I think perhaps the chairman, uh, or, or else at school. How many students in, in a quick Google search yields a bunch of different numbers? So how many students are currently enrolled?
I'll take that, uh.
Okay, and, and is it anticipated and, or is a condition of approval? Uh, will there be a proposed limit or cap for the next decade? Or is there a strategic plan? And that's why I'll take this to expand or not expand enrollment?
I'll take that one. Christopher Ross, uh, chair further, I, uh, I think I addressed that at, at the outset of my introductory comments, but to reiterate. Um, our enrollment is already governed by the two thousand twelve, um. To do, or two thousand thirteen conditions of approval, but there's a enrollment steps. So we start at five thirty-one, we go up fifty-three. That condition was met during COVID. The next step is at six thirty-seven, which we would be back in front of you to revisit traffic. Do another traffic study, see what else has happened. If we decide to expand the, the buildings of the school, we would have to. Come back in front of you to, to, to modify our special permit.
That honestly is not my question. My question quite specifically is, is there a strategic plan to move beyond that number? You've answered my question, which is, are we in compliance or are you in compliance with the existing requirements? We get that. But my question is quite different from.
So is there a strategic plan to grow the enrollment to six thirty-seven? No.
Or actually beyond six thirty-seven is my core concern. Thank you.
That doesn't.
Excuse me, Ken, I, I'm trying to let.
Hold on, Ken.
Ross, so answer the question.
So, so I, I want to be clear that we, you know, we, we do not have, I, as board chair, do not have a strategic plan. That increases enrollment to the next enrollment cap, but that doesn't mean that couldn't happen with a future school, with a future board chair, with a future head of school. I think we need to leave that optionality open for the schools pending, you know, a thorough public review like we do now. But to answer your specific question, I'm sure there is no current strategic plan that says, let's do it.
Thank you.
If, um, I can offer, um, based on Silver Hill, which is a, you know, substantial institution in our town. Um, there are long-term plans that are laid out and there are actions that happen. Silver Hill bought two residential properties, um, to expand their facility. And they were successful in doing that. Um, I, I'm sorry, but I, I think that. You know, there has to be some honesty here that, you know, we can't just say that, well, maybe in the future we might do something. There is a strategic plan that's being laid out here, and I think people need to be honest about it. And, you know, work with us. And, you know, work with us so that we can help you in your long-term plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Turner. I appreciate that, and I appreciate the spirit of, again, Christopher Ross over the record. I appreciate the spirit of that, of that invitation to, to work with the commission to, to incorporate that kind of planning, and I think that's an excellent idea. So thank you for that.
Uh, Commissioner, man, just real quick, I noticed in the permit, there is no lighting on the field today, correct? Is there other plans for lighting?
Yeah.
Okay.
There are pleasures, but there, there is emergency lighting in the garage level.
Yeah, I'm thinking more for the field. Okay.
I just wanted to follow up on, on, um, Commissioner Radman's question on the, the site levels. I think it wasn't clear to me. I think he'd asked you're building on top of the current football level, I think. Was there a thought, and I'm just curious from a ideation perspective, to go ahead and take six feet off the current level and, uh, you know, depress the lower level such that, you know, kind of split the difference, you may some, sometimes see garages or go down a little so that you, um, mitigate that. And I know that that requires a little extra earth movement, but sometimes that is just a matter of a couple of extra days of earth diggers. So it's curious, what was the thought process there versus going down two levels or, you know, all that?
Uh, an excellent, an excellent question. And yes, so as I mentioned earlier, we did borings during, in the existing field. And so where we find, you know, we talked earlier about the organics that we found, which are mostly in the fill section of the field towards the, towards the west side. The closer you get towards the east side where our grandstand is in that natural hill, which has already been cut, we run very quickly into wedge.
Okay.
And, and we did, we, you know, we can, we have the data on where the wedge is, and, and it had, the closer you get to that grandstand and athletic center of the wedge is basically right.
Okay, perfect. So that was.
Why we said field, keep the field, keep the existing grid.
Got it. And so that, that ties into just a quick follow-up, because I think it would be helpful to have, because I think we've run into other projects that require blasting, and that's a lot of impact on everything, um, from, you know, for obvious reasons. And then from a construction staging, uh, perspective, is there a, is there a plan that you'll develop in terms of where the laydown area is and, and the, the truck frequency and that type of thing during the, the project? Just understand that. Intensity.
We, we will at some point. We have not developed that yet because it would seem premature to do that. We have, we have a sense that we would use our maintenance yard. And we would, as, as a, as a staging area, and then to the extent we needed it, part of that lot that gets converted into a corral later on would be a staging area, but you'd work from the far end of the field where we put our store water detention in first and then work our way backwards with gravation.
Okay, got it. Well, thanks for asking that, that ledge question, it's really, thank you.
So thinking through the illumination question and something we ran into with, um, the fitness facility over at the Country Day School, um, when we were reviewing that, I don't know, three years ago, four years ago, something like that.
Seems like yesterday, seems like yesterday.
Uh, a lot more line of sight visibility to that structure from adjacent neighbors or across Frog Town Road from that structure and what, what was clear from then, and you can see it from the built, the, the outcome of the built structure is even though your lighting study might show a drop off to zero foot candles within twenty, thirty feet, it's the perceived lighting or the visibility of the lighting element from afar. Right? So right now, you can drive by their facility and the neighbor across the street sees those lights on in their transom windows at night when they're on, even though it's zero foot candles, you know, fifty feet away, they still see a beacon in the distance. That's what we're, I think, trying to avoid here, because this parking garage, especially in winter, winter months, right? That parking garage is going to be illuminated from four o'clock in the afternoon till whatever time at night that, you know, events are done and you need to vacate. Are the neighbors across the way or across the, you know, the wetlands area, are they going to be seeing a beacon of lights, you know, ring of, a row of lights in the parking structure visible to them? It might be zero foot candles thirty feet away, but they're going to still see the lights. And how type of light fixture, how is it nestled into the structure? Is it shielded? You know, seeing a glow of a parking area is one thing. Seeing a matrix of lights coming through and being visible to you three hundred feet away is a whole different story. So understanding what those views are, specifications on the light fixtures, additional detail in the cross-sections to understand how they're, how they're blocked by the structure, or maybe they're not, um, maybe they should be. Um, I think we have to go to a next level with that to really feel comfortable with it.
Yeah, um, Chairman Radman, I I totally agree with what you're saying. Um, you know, we, we need to look at the automobile, you know, the light that is caused by cars. Um, you know, our guidelines, uh, restrictions talk about, you know, fixtures overhead and how they illuminate the structure, but, um, this is unique. And you have so many automobiles with, um, you know, a light that is projected, and that is not quantified. And I think that we need to add this, this to the, the equation.
I agree, and I, I think, having, in my professional life, having worked on large parking structures as well in the past, you, you have to get a little more creative with it, because you do have a, a safety barrier that has to be a certain height and strength to prevent the cars from going off the cliff. Totally understood, and you have a certain free area that you need to maintain above that. But that doesn't mean there could be, there couldn't be another level of levers or something that allows the air to move through it, but shields the light from headlights, because, you know, SUVs out there, your headlights are four feet high sometimes, right? Um, that is, to Mr. Turner's point, that might be an even bigger issue with, you know, lights sweeping across the valley as people are pulling in and out of spots. Um, it's just a design solution that we need to see how you're going to solve for it.
This Commissioner Chris, I mean, I posed the question, what it looked like the neighbors as opposed to the drone eye view. Um, you know, especially, uh, during the winter at night where you have headlights and other, other lights. You know, the, um, window box issue, if you have vines going down, can kind of take the edge off that may constrict airflow a bit too. I don't know how that would work out, but I see people figuring that out. But these are some of the solutions I may want to consider, but the, um, the neighbor impact kind of weighs heavily, at least we and, and others, and we want to ensure that reasonable efforts have been made to mitigate whatever is mitigating.
I, I just have a couple of quick things. I just, uh, so, uh, we talked about the text change. The other application is the amended special permanent application site plan. We're looking for a special permit under this new text amendment, a- as well as Commissioner Rabin read our application six point four G that has to do with the amount of activation that will be required for this project. With regard to the special permit, uh, our application goes through in detail how we satisfy the special permit criteria. Uh, I'm not going to go through that tonight unless you really want me to. And then the last thing that I have is, and I know, uh, the town planner is aware of this, because your next meeting is more than thirty-five days away. I think the next meeting is January thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. I need to consent to an extension to keep the public hearing open, which I consent to.
Thank you. I was about to ask, because, um, I'd like to keep it open. I think there's, uh, um, I think there's a general consensus that it's a good project and that, you know, we'd like to see it be success, be, it be successful. Um, but there's outstanding questions. I've outlined them, other commissioners have outlined them, that would help to clarify and leave us of our concerns, uh, would also help the neighbors, uh, in terms of addressing, they probably have similar concerns. Um, what I would ask is any additional supplemental information, drawings, details, whatever you might be able to put together, photo realistic renderings. Um, if they could please be submitted to us at least five days prior to the next meeting, um, so they can be posted on website, neighbors can have a chance to look at them, we can have a chance to review them. Um, you know, we, if, like I said, they'll go a long way to answering a lot of the questions that people have.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate time. Uh, I assume there are no more questions, so.
I don't, commissioners, any, anything further? Mr. Turner? Nothing? We're good? S Larson, you're good? We got a big thumbs up. Yep, she's good. Uh, so to the, to the public that's in the room that may have come, we're going to hold this meeting, uh, we'll hold this application open until the January hearing, until we can get all that additional information.
And public comments will be taken at that.
Public comments will be during the January meeting. Um, hoping that the supplemental information can can answer a lot of questions for you. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, moving on, commissioners, uh, we've already deliberated and voted on Elm Street. We just discussed Wilton Road. That's moving into January, administrative actions. We've got possible regulation amendments. Sarah, you want to explain?
Yes, so this is no formal proposals, just some um, topics I want to float by you all before I go submit a formal amendment to the regulations. Um, it has to do with our one hundred and fifty-foot buffer area for structures located in the front yard. We get a lot of those, um, as you all are aware, and just some numbers for you all. We, um, in twenty twenty-three, we had twenty-four special permits relating to residentially zoned properties. Nine of those applications are a little less than forty percent of them were related to this front yard one hundred and fifty foot setback. You approved eight of the nine, and on every single one, the condition was just have a landscape buffer, so it's screened from the street.
Mm-hmm.
In twenty twenty-two, we had twenty-eight special permits related to residentially zoned properties. Nine of them are about a third, again, were related to the setback. You approved eight out of the nine again, and it was the same condition. So just a pattern I'm noticing and, you know, um, something to consider. Do we want to jog that back a little bit? So I ran some numbers. If you changed it to seventy-five feet instead of one fifty, every single one that was in the one acre zone or smaller would still come to this commission. It's just the two and four acre zones where you probably would start to not see some. Um, we could, what are the other ones? Um, you, I wouldn't write, so it's like, if you wanted to change it to a hundred feet, I wouldn't bother, because I think we, we would see all but one of what you've seen over the last few years. So if, if you do less than a hundred, you could just, or you, you get, it's like, um, I wouldn't change it. So seventy, so you could do seventy-five, you could do fifty feet, and then you it would capture everything smaller than one acre. Um, you could remove it altogether, except for maybe tennis courts and pools, since those are more controversial maybe. Um, just some ideas. Don't know if we want to change it or not, but.
Would you change that, the front yard pool?
Well, so that, that's the only time it's required. So if you have a structure located in your front yard, so that means in front of your house, between this, between the street and your house, if it's within a hundred and fifty feet of the street, you have to get approval for the commission. It has to meet your front yard setback requirement. But it's just because it's located in the front yard.
Could I ask a question, Sarah? The, the one that we saw over in the east side, if we removed or changed that, that one, which is the one that we rejected most notably this year, would have been approved, correct?
Not if you change it to seventy-five. That one was like fifty feet from the front property line. Um, also, you know, again, you could keep it for pools and tennis courts. I'm just saying, if, if you have a, if someone's proposing a two-car garage that's eighteen feet from their front property line, why, why are they here? I don't know.
So, um, Sarah, it's Kent. Um, I'm uh, just a little confused. I, I don't understand the pros and the cons of why we want to make this change. I, um, understand that you're recommending something that probably makes a lot of sense, but I, I just don't understand. You know, wh- what we're, you know, proposing versus the trade-offs, you know, what, what are the pros and cons?
I think Sarah's point is that we've approved so many of them with the basic, basic condition of landscaping buffer only, that if we were to re- revise the um, the language of the regulation or the, the distance regulation, um, we would lessen the amount of applications we need to see, lessen the load on us. Um, meaning load.
Yeah.
Um, what I worry about is, um, you, they, I, I don't think it should be strictly a dimensional criteria, right? Uh, we've seen a number of unique lots that are corner lots that have two front yards, and technically they're putting something in the back of the house, but they're in the front yard setback, because it's
Yeah.
all of that. There's got to be a way to craft the language that maybe it is a dimensional reduction as well, but there, I think there's got to be more to it. Um,
So you're suggesting maybe like defining front yard a little more effectively, like the primary front yard versus the tertiary front yard.
Maybe.
Uh, this commissioner, because I would also be concerned that if we move it to seventy-five, um, you know, the requirements we had for screening, I think probably, I, I assume are very well thought out and reasonable, and that, that kind of goes away, so.
So I, I hadn't gotten to this part, because I was just trying to take everyone's temperature first, but, you know, let's say we were to jog back to seventy-five, we could just clarify that if you're putting a structure in the front yard, regardless of where it's located, you have to screen it to the satisfaction of the zoning inspector, which you know is the condition we put on every.
Right. So in other words, if it's within, uh, between uh, seventy-five and one hundred and fifty zone, uh, you can put some things, but not everything.
Yeah.
So no pools or anything, uh, without a special permit, they go the full
Yeah.
process. They would need to be appropriately screened, uh, to the suspect and the zoning inspector, and you can say no. And if they don't like the no, they can bring it to the full commission and we can override. That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the only thing I would add
That's okay.
is I feel like if we did that, it's probably a benefit to this commission, in the sense that we don't have so much traffic here. Probably benefit to the homeowner who's trying to get it approved.
Yeah.
But I almost feel like today it's a forcing function for them to play nice with their neighbors. And if you take that off, I feel like you're almost not defending the neighbors enough. Because i- if you think about all those that were here, there was always neighbors in the room, and I felt like it forced the homeowner to be a little softer in what they're proposing, because they had to appeal to the neighbor, even though we approved it.
So I
It forced a conversation.
I hear the point, but I would, I would challenge you on that, because we're, we're essentially analyzing residents with uniquely shaped lots, because they have to put something in their front yard versus if you have a perfectly conforming lot and you just want to put an accessory two-car garage, you don't have to tell your neighbors, like, you, you don't need any sort of extra approval, so we're to me, it comes across, like, I, I hear you with the whole tennis court situation and everything, which is why I'm not saying every single structure should be exempt, but, you know, again, I'm using the two-car garage example. Why, why are they coming before us?
Honestly, I think because we provide consistency and people who do buy unusual shaped lots probably understand that there are issues with that. And I think that when we, we protect you, frankly, from having to be an arbiter, because if you become the sole person who's got to design the, what the, how many conversations have, do we, have we had where Mr. Chris will point out that it is really helpful to have appropriate natural plants?
I know, but I know it'd be brought in.
No, no, but I mean, I, I think that's
That would be everyone.
As I drove up, as I drove up Woodbridge Circle last week, one of the side discussions was the requirement, for example, that somebody close off after doing their pool with trees, and there was a lot of, do we really have to? And they did it, and it looks great. And I honestly think there's some real values to some of these things, particularly to, Tom, to your point about maintaining that people have got to come in and ask. Because I, I think, you know, yeah, we may approve them, but I think people come with a good plan because they know they got to come.
I agree with you to a certain extent. I will play the devil's advocate for a moment, though. As a homeowner who's come before this commission for a pool within a hundred and fifty feet of the road, I mean, it adds a cost to the homeowners. Um, and it's, you know, I'm not saying I mean, it adds a cost to the homeowners, um, and it's, you know, I'm not saying that that we should just eliminate that, but I think that we need to be cognizant of where. And when and how we're adding a cost, and if it's just because, then we can settle neighbor-to-neighbor disputes. I'm not sure that's.
So, but to go to your, could I just follow this, right? To go to that question, what cost do we really add if somebody takes, right, somebody's gotta do a plan, right?
You've gotta hire a landscape architect, you gotta hire an engineer, you may need to hire an architect, you've gotta get a survey. You've gotta pay the fee.
But you gotta do all those things to go before the permitting officer.
So I would say it's the application fee and probably like the legal fee, like if you're going to hire.
Right, you gotta pay your attorney.
Hmm.
If, if you have good relations with your neighbors, you don't need an attorney. That's what we, that's what we see.
But if you're on the commission, you do.
Good fences make good neighbors, right?
That's true, that's true.
I, I just wait the.
For commissioners.
What comes more expensive?
Excuse me, Commissioner Turner, um, you know, this is a wonderful conversation, but I think we have to be very careful, because. Um, when you start to simplify or. Find a way to short-circuit approvals. Um, you know, how, how do you make that fair throughout all the applications? Um, you know, do we lose that ability to, um, control and to have rational approvals? Um, you know, yes, it might increase the cost, it, it increases the time. But it's a process that we are responsible for. To make sure that the outcome and the ultimate development is appropriate.
So I think in a small town like New Canaan, we've been able to kind of. Handcraft some of these projects, in a larger city, you don't. You don't have, I mean, there's just, the volume is too great, you would never be able to do that, and so how do we do that? Can't we do it with zoning? You write down the rules and people have to follow them, and that's how you get the consistency, and so what really surprised me when it came to New Canaan. Is how much we do make things come before this commission, how much we do wanna tinker with the little pieces of a project, which makes it. I think it makes it better, I don't disagree with that, but it makes it more subjective, and it makes it more costly, more time-consuming for that again.
So I just wanna jump in real quick, um, with, with my seventy-five foot example, if we change it. You, I, I don't think it's physically possible. To, um, in the, in the one acre lot, to put something in the front yard that would be less. There's more than seventy-five feet away, so, so I'm, I'm using an example of two acre lots or larger. If someone proposes a structure seventy-six feet away from their front property line. That means then the next closest house to them, you have the. I don't know, twenty-five feet width of road, and then you have at least thirty-five feet before the next house starts, so it's not. Like, it's very far away, you know, it, it's, it's over a hundred feet away from that next house, so. That's where, you know, this is coming from, it's not like I'm suggesting, oh, someone can, you know, in the B rez zone where, you know, everyone's packed in, you could put a garage right in. Right in your front yard, and then twenty-five feet away is the next house, but, you know, this is just an observation I made, so if the commission. Does not wanna tinker with this, we don't have to, it was just.
Well, I think, let me, let me just jump in for a second. We might be overthinking this, right, we're, we're specifically talking about the minor detached accessory structure regulation, right?
No.
That's the hundred and fifty foot pool.
Well, so it's also for the mic, that's a, that's a whole other thing I hadn't even brought up yet, we also require this for sheds under two hundred square feet.
Right, so let's.
Require a permit.
Let's lump both of them in together. So. I mean, we, we, we obviously have very clear front. Side and rear yard setbacks for primary structures.
Yep.
That, other than this hundred and fifty foot rule from front yard. The side and rear yard setbacks apply to the accessory structures as well.
Yes, always.
Right, actually, uh, does it apply to the two-hundred-foot or less shed issue? I think that can be closer.
Oh, no, so it can't, which is, which is like a, a problem that we.
Let's come back to that for a second, let's come back to it for a second. Um, maybe we're overthinking it in that the regulation could be amended to. Uh, such that the accessory structure. Can't be beyond, can't be any closer to the front property line than the front of the primary residence. Whatever that dimension is.
But that's the front yard.
Yeah.
No, it can't be in the front yard.
So at all?
No, I'm saying, well.
So, so the way we enforce it now is, let, let's say your house is fifty feet from your front property.
Right.
If, if you propose a structure that's parallel to your house, we don't. Require that you come to the commission, cuz you're now in your side yard.
Oh, we did, no, we sure did.
No, no, but like, we've stopped that, because if you, if you read our zoning regulations, that is the side yard now, like, that is.
Let me, let me take an example, so we, we approved and it got built. A property on the corner of, uh, Skyview and Davenport Ridge.
No, no, but that's, that's a corner lot.
That's a corner lot.
I'm.
Understood, let me take that as an example, right, so that one, they were proposing a pool house and a, uh, pool. In the back of the house, not in the, but it. Sorry?
They have two front yards.
They have two front yards.
Yeah.
They were inside of the front yard setbacks for both sides.
Yeah, no, no, no.
But they did not comply with the hundred and fifty foot stipulation.
Yeah, no, I, I understand.
Right, so. And if we were to allow that to happen such that the. Structure could be built. Inside of, the hundred and fifty foot rule goes away, but it just has to be constrained to the. The, the line of the house that it's being, you know, built, whatever side it's being built on. Could that?
So you're saying, treat it like a side yard?
Treat it like a side yard.
So.
Well, we could do, Chairman, simply say, if you have two front yards, this doesn't apply to you. It only applies if you have one front yard. Uh, so something simple, cuz corner lots are kind of funky, I will say.
They are.
It's more of a special judgment, and I'm very much in favor of trying to decrease the hassle factor when, when we're. In any way we can, in a reasonable manner. Um, so, I think, I'm happy, I'm happy to explore it, but I'm not quite sure how I'll come out with it.
I mean, I think the original intent of the regulation was to prevent people from building structures that are in front of their houses.
Yeah.
Right? So, if, if we worded in such a way that you can. You can't build an accessory structure in front of your house.
Without special.
Without special permit application, that would relieve the pressure on the application flow. The number of applications that we see for unique sites like the Skyview one that I was referencing, or others, where they're, they are. Behind the facade of the house, they may be in the one hundred and fifty foot, but if that was go, if that was gone and we. We reworded it based on the, the, uh, front or side of the house, they would be in compliance.
This is, uh, this is Commissioner Swartlow. I've been on for the last hour and a half or so, but the first time I've said anything, because I think the problem here is, uh. The definition of front yard. And, uh, the problem with that is the fact that some people have two front yards.
Right.
I think that's something we should explore, uh, in more detail, in, in terms of, maybe we have, uh, a, a property owner declare what their front, which one is their front yard. And then we can apply special zoning to the, uh, the side of the house that they're not declaring as a front yard.
So I will say the way we do front yards is pretty standard across Connecticut, you know, I. I don't think what we're, like, saying that they have two front yards, that is pretty standard.
That's pretty common, yeah.
So I wouldn't.
I've seen three front yards in one application, remember?
Yeah, but that, that's where the problem is actually being, uh, uh, generated right now. In, in properties that have two front yards, or I've never heard of three front yards, but maybe even four front yards.
Um, I don't, I don't think.
It's a very difficult situation to, uh, deal with for a property.
Okay, but so.
But I think, I don't think we can change those properties that have two front yards, at least how they're defined with two front yards, but we can relieve them of the. The burden of compliance with a regulation like this because of their two front yard condition.
So you're suggesting you relieve them of that, that burden in, in the entire property. Both, both front, yeah, front, both front yards.
No.
No, with, uh, well, they, they're gonna have to, no matter what, they're gonna have, again, I'll use the Skyview one as an example, corner lot, two front yards. We're not relieving them of the responsibility of having two front yards. What we're helping them with is. Not having to come before the commission if they are proposing a structure. That is inside or behind the facade of the, the building, inside all setbacks, and. Behind the facade of the building that faces a front yard. Even though they don't meet the hundred and fifty foot stipulation.
And I think that's, that, that further complicates it, cuz the word facade here is not clear. A building in, in, in terms of what I understand can have four facades, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so they, so, and, and those four facades could be all, all of which on a front yard.
No, the facade facing a front yard condition.
But if it's on a corner, it has at least two front yards, right?
Right, so it has two different facades that face two different front yards.
So I, I understand the point, and I, I can wordsmith a bit, and again. To. To the average citizen, most of our zoning regulations don't make sense and aren't clear, so I, I typically have to. Explain it before an application anyway, so.
So just another piece here, so I would love to see in those that we approved over the last two years, what were the conditions? Cuz I just went through my notes, the four that I saw were all the conditions where the HVAC equipment's gonna go and lighting. And I'm concerned those two things just get swept away, because no one's paying as much attention to that as they are everything else.
I actually could, and, and this will go to that before you even answer that. It, it, go to Skyview, which is a great example. Skyview's mailing address is Skyview. Every component of that is Skyview, right, if we all know this one. I like the idea of having houses designated by where the post office delivers the mail, I hate sound like. You know, my, it's a Wonderful Life, or whatever it was, but, but I mean, it's, pick, pick a front yard, right?
Orientation.
Or the orientation, I mean, I, I, I think that in all of these, it, as opposed to making it too complicated, let's pick a front yard.
That's exactly where, that's exactly where I'm going.
Right.
I, I mean, if you have a, a kind of a faux Palladian house, which clearly has a, has a main facade and a plain side. You're obviously gonna pick that side, you know, the, the, the major side of the house to be your front yard. And I, I think, I think you're getting to the, to the point that I was trying to explain as well.
Great.
One thing I would find helpful if we do.
Could I just address?
Oh, please.
Tom's comment before with the, um, mechanical equipment and stuff, and so that's where. If we went down the route of exempting people, we're gonna have a statement on landscaping, you could further add a statement that the mechanical equipment has to be screened to the. You know, um.
Satisfaction of the.
Yeah. Um, and then with the lighting. You know, why aren't we considering just adding dark sky compliant regulations?
Yeah.
To the regulations, because I mean, we, we do have lighting requirements that every. You know, new construction has to meet, and we do enforce it, so. I'm, I'm not saying that condition on special permits is redundant, but we. We do have good light. Regulations, and we do enforce them, so if, if we wanna expand on them, we should, instead of just having the same condition every single time.
I, I hear you on the lighting, I mean, I've seen. Neighbors and others where they have the lights on all the time, and all it does is help the birdwatchers not fall down when they're breaking into the house, as opposed to anything else. Uh, what I would find helpful, if, and the issue of the, uh, front yard. And is some pictures of, you know, this is what it might look like on a couple examples. If we were to change it to seventy-five feet. And there's what they could do and what it would look like, cuz I'm gonna, I, I think.
Sorry, but I'm not following.
Well, for example, you have someone who wants to put a, uh, garage in. Within the, uh, seventy-five or between one fifty and seventy-five, so in this front yard setback, as an example, what it might look like. Perhaps with some screening, to, just to get a sense of what it might look like as people start doing this, assuming we would approve it. That's what I'm thinking.
Uh, it's, uh, Commissioner Turner, um, I, I would agree with that, I, I think there's a. Many examples that are happening around town, you have, um, the storage pods that are. Placed in the front yard or within that setback. Um, they're not regulated, and there's no, um, time definition of how long they remain. Um, there are institutions, and I'll say for example Silver Hill. That have huge. Storage facilities that have been placed in their front yard setback. That have become accessory structures. That, um, have not been challenged. Um, so I think that there has to be an understanding that, um. Uh, there are limitations within this setback, if regardless if it's seventy-five feet or a hundred and twenty feet.
Is there a way you can put a clause on there, I can, I'm just thinking of the homeowners, cuz I've had to deal with this. If you do change it, that they still have to submit the letters, and if there's any op, you can't.
If we're allowing it as of, right, we're allowing it as of right, too. Again, like, if we don't wanna do this, that's fine, it was just.
I was thinking more of a fast lane.
No, that's, that, that's not what we're trying to say, we don't wanna do it, we wanna do it in a rational way. And we, we need to discuss this to find that. Point where it works for everybody.
If, if we went back to my little basic idea, and we said everybody's gotta pick a front yard, right? Do you know of those twenty-three apps, how many we would have had to have seen?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I'm sure it would exclude a lot of them, because the, we have. The, the one we approved last month, it had. It was a corner lot, we, we're getting one in January that is, it's like a V-shaped lot, and it's got. You know, a street on each side, but, you know, Skyview's another one, so. I would take the majority of them.
We have that one that would be pending litigation too, right?
Correct, that one will be pending some, or.
Hmm.
The other thing I think is part and parcel of this is the definition of what a structure is, I think we came into that with, I think, the old studio one where. Part of it was the, the coping of the pool was considered a, a structure, whereas. You know, the pool house is a different type of structure, and it seems like having. An earmark to kind of look at what is a, a separate structure would be helpful. I know that's earmarked at some point.
So I, I can further clarify that, you know, when we have more concrete language, but I think the interpretation of what a structure is, it hasn't changed since the old studio time. So we can get into that later, but, you know, pool coping, pool house, pool are all, all have the same setback, and we're all considered a structure.
Right, it's good insight.
Hmm. Okay, so I can. Maybe next month, we'll see depending on how the agenda goes, but I can come back with. Language that, you know, now that I've heard the comments from everyone, and we can go from there. With further edits.
Mm-hmm.
But then just to piggyback off of that very quickly. We don't regulate detached, very small sheds on properties, or just, you know, small accessory structures like that, you're allowed one per lot. Under two hundred square feet, you don't need a building permit, you don't need a zoning permit, we require that they.
Provided that it's not on a permanent foundation.
Correct. Um. So, yeah, we don't require a permit, um, but we require that they need that a hundred and fifty foot setback. For front yards, and we.
Sarah, I'm sorry for interrupting, is there a, a time period? For these temporary structures?
No, so you're allowed one always, as of right, no permit.
You know, forever.
Correct. Um, it doesn't, so it, so it.
It's not necessarily a temporary structure, it's a shed.
It's a shed, you could put a shed on cinder blocks, that's a hundred and ninety-nine square feet, it's clear in our zoning regulations, you do not need a permit.
Right.
But you have to meet the a hundred and fifty foot setback for front yards, or you need to get a special permit, and you have to meet. Accessory structure setbacks and.
Excuse me, I, I gotta go home and move a shed.
Yeah.
But so it, it's an issue. It, you know. Many homeowners don't follow that rule, it's, I mean, why do we enforce it?
Exactly, because if you don't have to get a permit for it.
Exactly.
Right.
So why, and you know, we get this issue a lot, where, you know, why do we have these regulations if we can't enforce them, or they're so difficult to enforce? So. I mean, do we, do you want us to go on a, you know, manhunt for these illegal sheds or?
No, 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 but what you do, why you do want to keep them is. That frankly, to deal with the bad actor who then puts three sheds up, and somebody then calls you, and you go find out about it, I mean.
So that's the difference, anything more than one, you do need a permit, it's just that one single one.
I understand, but I mean, that's why you have it, right? That people put their shed in and it it, you know, I bet you that there's been a bazillion. Of characterized this discussions between neighbors over time about their sheds. But I think the presence of the regulation keeps the tonality of it. Helpful and somebody at least asks, maybe I got to call P and Z and find out if there's a rule. Right? Before they go get a two hundred and two foot. Permanent shed.
There.
But are you, are you? Are you suggesting getting rid of the hundred fifty foot criteria for that only?
I think we should get rid of it for that because to say you don't need a building permit, but hey, you're going to need a special permit to.
Right.
Shed in your, like that.
We still keep all the rest of the regulations in terms of size and not in setbacks and. You know, non-permanent structure, all of those in a single, single unit. Keep that all in place, but get rid of the hundred fifty foot portion of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I um it.
And a lot of shit.
Kent Turner, I. Um, I I guess I am struggling with understanding, um. What is a an accessory stru- structure versus a shed? I mean. You know, these these. Enclosures are very large. I mean, it is an accessory structure.
So it has.
Why don't we call it as it is?
Well, it is an accessory structure, but it's under a certain square footage, which historically we've. Always allowed. Anything under two hundred square feet. Is unregulated.
And it's.
Oh, okay, so I can.
Specific definition um that I, you know, I don't know off the top of my head, but I'm. Pulling it up now, but it is extremely specific, and again, it's only one per property before. We do have that authority to. Enforce and require a permit.
What, but again, what's the footprint? What's the square footage?
Less than two hundred square feet.
Okay.
The one car garage, right? Ten by five.
And how does that impact the, um, I guess their iPods or whatever they are that. Are temporary structures that somebody is moving out of their house and they're storing some of their furniture or whatever. Um. Wh- wh- it, does that fall in under the same two hundred square feet?
And so, I mean, that's. That's where we do have, you know, a gray area in the zoning regulations, and there is an enforcement issue because. If someone's moving, I don't, I don't know if we have the legal authority to say you can't have that pod here. And you know that. It does provide provide issues and you know, there are people that will use that, so I don't. I don't have the answer to that off the top of my head, but right now I'm talking more about those sheds that are permanent. I'm not talking about storage structures.
Mm hmm.
Um.
But but doesn't it make sense that, um?
No, I I.
That we we. Quantify a a a time limit? I mean, yes, we should allow it, but. Um, at some point, you know, these structures continue.
I I agree. I I just don't have an answer to that tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think I have what I need. Um, I will. Hopefully come back with language next month, but we'll see if they suddenly done that. So thank you all for the comments.
Okay. Commissioners, uh, last item on the agenda is just approval of the meeting minutes from the.